Thank you everyone for being here this evening. It's approximately 6:01. The date is May 8, 2025. I'm going to ask our clerk, Madam Clerk, if you would please do a roll call. Commissioner Sonny Burton. You're Commissioner Laura Warren.
Present.
Commissioner Laura Warren.
Present.
Commissioner Lisa DeVito.
Present.
And our city manager Christina Marie.
Here.
Finance director Steve Hoffman.
Here.
City attorney John Holmes.
Here.
County Sheriff's Office Captain David Usery.
Present.
And Mayor Myers.
I'm present, thank you.
Again, thank you all for being here. Commissioner Moore, if you would please leave us an invitation. Please stand if you're ready.
It's all heads. They're here in the following once again. We want to thank you for your grace and mercy. We thank you for bringing us together on this evening. As far as God, we ask that you would look upon each and every one of us this evening. Give us mercy, give us peace, give us understanding. Help us, dear Lord, to agree and disagree with humility and love. Help us to do those things that are pleasantries in your sight that will help this little city of ours to sustain. And on this best we two act and let people find. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, is that there? Are you standing? We have the whole house. With that, I'm going to start off with the announcements. We have quite a lot going on this coming weekend. Let's start off with the North Prospect area historic walking tour. This is Saturday, May 10th, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. You're to meet at the Crescent City Women's Club. That's 604 North Summit Street. There'll be a walking guided tour provided by our volunteers. And the tour will last approximately 45 minutes. Please make sure you bring everyone along. And that's on for Prospect Street. And then immediately following that, at 1:00 p.m., they're going to have the Historic Marker dedication for the Hubbard Morris House. And this is introducing a new annual initiative to dedicate a historic marker each year for a local site of historical significance. And this is all put on by our members of the Fruitland Peninsula Historic Society. And that's going to be, is that going to be on Lake Street or do you want them on Park Street?
It'll be on Park Street.
Okay, so it says Park Street, but you need to be on Lake Street, right behind the house. Right directly behind the house. Also, many of you might have gotten this in your mailbox. Thank you, Commissioner DeVito, for bringing it to our attention. Letter carriers food drive. The second Saturday in May, which should be this Saturday. It says, "Put your non-perishable donation in a bag by your mailbox." They'll deliver it to a local food bank. So please make sure if you have an opportunity that you can do that. Then we're going to move on to Thursday, May 15th. The Fruitland Peninsula Historic Society, they're having their annual hot lights dinner. Starts at 4:00 p.m. and it'll be at the Women's Club. And I believe you're supposed to bring a dish, correct?
I require RSVP online, so then they're not ready to.
And RSVP online, do you want for those watching and those in the audience, where do they RSVP to online?
On the website, FPHistory.com.
Everybody got that, FPHistory.com. Let's continue because if you have not noticed, this is historic month. We've got all of our markers. I believe we have some of those people that went around at night and you woke up next morning and you had markers in front of your house. I know I see someone out there in pink who's probably responsible for that. I believe, of course, Commissioner Laurie and Rachel, you were very involved in that. So we're going to have, on Friday, May 16th, at 6:00 p.m., you're going to meet at the Crescent City Downtown Partnership, which is right here on Central Avenue, next to the barber shop. They're going to have a guided walking tour provided by the volunteers and it will last approximately one hour. That's at 6:00 p.m. And that's going to be up and down Central Avenue. Commissioner DeVito, are you doing that this year?
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that.
With participation, it's an interactive conversational event.
Okay. That's interesting.
We've got a microphone and speaker.
Oh, you've got a microphone and speaker?
Yes.
Okay, that could be dangerous. Up and down Central Avenue. I heard last year she did a fabulous job and everyone was very happy that they had gone. I'm sorry though, I'm able to be here.
There are a lot of people in the historical society who are multi-generation here. And hopefully as many of them will be here again because they have a lot to share.
To share.
So that's what I mean by interactive and participative.
Okay. And then that evening, if you're not at the historical tour, I will almost say you're probably going to be at the bingo at the Women's Club. That's at 5:00 p.m. Bingo starts at 5:45. Do not be late. It's $20 at the door. You get dinner and you get bingo. You must be 18 years of old or older to participate.
Are they serving beer? Are they serving beer?
Uh, no. But they are, they are, they are, they are, there's a raffle.
Oh.
You know, through bingo, so there is, so there is that. And then on Saturday, the following day, they're having a barbecue. It's the best grilled half chicken plus two sides. And it's from, at 11:00 a.m. until they sell out for $15. And that will also be at the Women's Club. They ask for everybody to please join them. And then, of course, we can't forget Bongo. Bongo is the third Wednesday of each month. It's going to be May 21st this, this month, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. The cost is $6. Snacks and drinks will be available for a minimal charge. Then we're going to move on to, this is our fourth annual, fifth annual actually, Cops Kids in Kayaks. And it's at Dexter Park. And I don't know if you've ever gone out there, but please, if you can, do, do so. This is Sheriff Gator Deloach and all of his staff when they first stepped into Crescent City as our law enforcement partner. They did this for the kids. This was done some years ago. They picked it back up. And every year it gets better and better. They're going to have, there's fishing. Lee provides the fishing. He is local. Davey, Lee Davey and his wife Cheryl. And he has quite a few fishing rods. People have been donating them. And he told me yesterday, he has at least, I think, 40 of them cleaned up. He teaches the children how to fish. And then they walk away with a fishing rod. So that's really neat. We have Sam Clark. We have Sam and the friends of Dunn's Creek. They come out with all their volunteers. They teach the children how to kayak. That's very important. And water safety. So there's a lot to do. They have a bounce house and a water slide. It's just a lot of fun. It's at Dexter Park from 10:00 to 4:00. There will be food available from local vendors, kind of ice, spicy, lemonade, black and blue barbecue. It's Saturday, June 7th. And this is going out in all the flyers, all your water bills, and it's also going out to the schools. So then we have, and I think this is about, I'm going to wrap this up. June 13th to 14th, we've got the Crescent City Women's Club is doing their Yarn and Fade Sale. And that's going to be from 8:00 to 4:00, both June 13th and 14th, at the Women's Club. We have a lot going on. Thank you all very much for all that you do. Do we have Commissioner Laurie? Do you or Commissioner DeVito want to talk a little bit about what's going on this month and what the signs mean?
Well, you covered a lot of the, the start marker dedication and the tours that Commissioner DeVito gives. And it is start preservation month. It's a nationwide, a nationwide observance. We started doing it here four years ago. So this is our fourth year doing it. And my project, what I really concentrate on is those cool little signs that say, "This place matters." And they have a QR code in front of them and each one's different. So when you see one, you can use your phone and push a button and it'll pull up the web, the webpage and tell you all about the history of the building, the understandable part. And it has pictures of it from, you know, it's, how many, depending on the building, there's some, like the Three Bananas has, I have pictures from all the way back to when it was built in the back 200s. And it has the history of it, what it was before and lots of. So it's just kind of a cool way to do a, a walking tour of the city and see the history. And you don't have to use the signs either. If you wanted to fit it on our website, FPHistory.com, you'll see this, this, this place matters. It has a map of all the sites. And you can click on there and see all the pages. So it's just something that we started four years ago. And it's kind of bigger and bigger every year. So we love them.
And the big blocks.
Oh, yes. And, and yeah, some of the signs do say, "This place matters." And it's when they, it might be a vague thought and it shows you a picture of what was there before. So the historic buildings that we've lost in the city. So if we want to bring attention to that, that, you know, these things just disappear if we don't take care of them and don't preserve them. So.
Well, thank you for everybody that's part of that. Yes, Ms. List. You have, I know you have an announcement too you would like to make.
This is from Miss 19 Cedar Street. They also wanted to mention that for the first time, we've done a video with Bob Lee. It is an amazing video and it was a dream come true. When I first came to town, I proposed this to Bob Lee and he told me, "Are you crazy?" So this past time, he told me that it was a great idea. And we're going to try to loop it when we have our meetings. This is going to be for the tree and garden board. And it is a webinar. We're asking the public to please view it. It's a community benefit of trees by Dr. Baum. By Dr. Earhart, a professor of foreiculture in the School of Agriculture at Tennessee Tech. And that's going to be May 13th at 12:00 p.m. I think Christina is going to post it on our Facebook. That way people can get more information about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, what she was referring to was the first thing that we, the first event that we had kicked off historic preservation month was on the 26th. The Purple Balm Players and FBHS worked together to get, to do a tour of the east side of Central Avenue. The Purple Balm Players were reenacting several, was eight different, seven different people, eight different people from the Crescent City's history. And Bob Lee filmed it and had it all together. And it's now posted on our website. Again, FPHistory.com will bring you to it. And it's really good. He did a really great job. And they, the actors did a really great job. I mean, they took people from our history and stepped into their shoes basically and, 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 you know, with them through the day. So it was really, they did a great job. They really put a lot of effort into it. So it was really interesting.
Well, thank you all very much again. From our fire chief, Jason.
Hi, sir.
He wants everyone to know that they're currently not approving any burn permits in the city. How thankful we are, how blessed we are to look up and there'd be dark clouds. Yes, and we all got some much-needed rain. I don't know if y'all were as crispy as we all were, but, um, but we got some much-needed rain, but still, we haven't gotten a significant amount of rainfall. So at this time, there will be no burn permits in the fruitland city. So just wanted to make sure that we went over that. Do we have anything else, commissioners, before we get on to this? None? We've got before you, you've got the approval of the minutes. I'll retain the motion.
Um, Mayor, can I just mention one thing? The list of minutes that we're supposed to approve, and I'm sorry, this is a mental agenda, so I won't have to write one. It includes the minutes from the January 10th reception. But we approved those at a prior meeting. It was on a prior agenda. And I remember that we had changes to them. Those have been previously approved, as I understand it. And then the only other thing I would say is in the revised agenda packet, there are new minutes. I did not have a chance to review. I was, there's a lot of new documents in the revised agenda packet. So I haven't had a chance to look at any of the changes.
Okay.
I don't hope that anybody else, but I have not had a chance to look at all those.
Dexter Park, if you would just check to make sure that if we listed the January 10th and the last, that those were in fact already approved.
I know for sure that the 10th was listed on February 13th agenda, where I think we approved minutes. And I, I remember writing some additions and corrections. I think it was just the reception minutes, not necessarily the January 11th.
Yeah, because I didn't remember the January 11th.
No, it was not.
I think they just added it as part of this, so.
Right, but we, we approved the 10th.
Okay. And it really wasn't much for the 10th. It was just another reception. So that we have, we have it wrapped on record.
But it was, it was there and, and we kind of fleshed it out. So just want to mention that.
So commissioners, we have, before you, you have the, at least the January 11th, January 14th, January 22nd, January 28th, February 7th, February 12th, and February 14th minutes.
I have, I have one correction on February 7th.
Okay.
It, it, it was a special reading. It says, halfway down, Mr. Martin, Mr. Farmers, he reconsidered for the city manager position when the city of Crescent City reopened its position. I believe that, yeah, it's my assumption that she said that he could reapply for the position. Was that?
She did?
Yeah, and that's, I just remember that sticking in my head.
So rather than reconsider, reapply?
Reapply, yeah.
I just wanted, um, so one thing that, that probably didn't make sense.
Commissioners, do you have anything else? If I can, I'll entertain a motion either.
I'll, I'll move that we approved the minutes of, okay. February, or January 10th, 11th, January 14th, January 22nd, January 28th, February 7th, February 12th, February 13th, or 12th?
Okay, we have a proper motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have, Commissioner DeVito?
I'm just, I'm really not comfortable approving minutes. I have not had the opportunity to read since, I think they just went out, you know, late last night. But I'll go ahead and vote for them to move.
That's up to you. You don't have to, you can vote, you can vote negative.
I don't know, that's, I just, you know, wanted to make clear, but I haven't had a chance to totally read.
Okay.
I might add there, those are just typo errors. Honestly, yes. Also, I may, on January 10th, the corrected reception minutes, yes, they were approved. And the minutes for January 10th, 11th, as we have classified, really that should have just been stated as January 11th.
Okay. So do we make that change?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, so again, we have current motion in a second. All in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, so approved. With that, I'm going to go ahead at this time and we're going to go to our public comment section. I have, have a comment card from Mr. Newbold. Mr. Newbold, would you like to come forward? Please state your name, your address. Melanie will start the clock. We have three minutes. Hello, Mr. Newbold.
Yes, sir, I'm here. My name is John Newbold. I live at 566 Oak Highway 17, Crescent City. And I'm here to report in relation to the last Blue Ribbon Committee meeting. Between the last two meetings, I was tasked with looking for possible grant sources. I talked with Rich, Rick Dunzamas, with our potential firm, REG. I also talked with Paul River Weaver, who was with the Historic Survey. And as a result of both of those, we were sent a comprehensive list of possible grants. Paul Weaver recommended one, but it was also on the same list that REG provided for us. With that, it is my understanding, the process is that with this information, it goes to the city. Then they will pursue the grants after they have a memorandum of understanding with the school district regarding the transfer of the property to the city. So the Blue Ribbon Committee, so that's where it stands right now. I don't know if, if that's just happened in the last week or so, but that's where we are at the moment. The Ribbon Committee will remain in the process of pursuing grants only at the direction of the city. For example, if the city wishes us to mobbing someone or representatives, in this regard, we would be happy to do so as a group or individually as you, the commission, direct us. The committee wishes to thank the city commission for its, for their support, not only financially, but in many other ways. Many people in this area are anxious to see this project move forward. We are here to help. Thank you again individually, as commissioners, and as a commission as a whole. So if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer. And Dan Nods is also here.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Newbold. And I believe that is, it's on the agenda for us to have discussion.
Yeah, I assume you have a list of the grants that came from RHE.
We have the, is it mixed in with the? So let's go back to the last team, we can do a copy of the, before the discussion.
Because I think, I think every commission should have a copy of that.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm here.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, our next speaker is Commissioner Rat. Some of these, I believe some of these, let me, just for one moment, it's Rat. Captain Usery. I believe some of these are probably going to want to speak after possibly you speak. Or are you, are you good with that? If we move any discussions regarding today's events until that time?
Whatever you like, Mayor.
That would be my preference.
I mean, if it's okay with the speakers.
Yes. The speakers, prefer, with the speakers that are here for that, prefer that, okay.
I prefer that.
Thank you. So if I call your name, if it's regarding today, please just ask that you could wait until, and he comes up soon after.
And then, just so they understand, you're explaining, you want us to speak after the sheriff gives his ready.
Right, so he has an opportunity, yes.
Okay.
So we've got Nancy Wong.
Yes, speak afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Cox, afterwards. Okay, thank you. We've got Lucy.
Afterwards.
Afterwards, okay. Do we have any other speakers in public comment at this time? Seeing no one else, we're going to close public comment at this time. I will open it up after the captain has had an opportunity to get this before. Okay, Christina Green, we've got, who's next?
We have the celebration of life for James Sachi. This is a special event permanent request for utilization of Eagle Lion Park on Saturday. So we added this to the packet for her.
They're doing celebration of life, they want it all day.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you can do, you're welcome. Please come up and speak.
Yes, ma'am. Hello, my name is William Parsons. I'm the commander for the picture response team. Also, James is right-hand man and best friend. And we lost him to stage four cancer. It happened very, very quickly, but James helped the community, the state, on many levels, and even other states and other countries as well. Done hurricane disaster, hurricane deployment, missing persons, survivor recoveries, rural transport, I mean, you name it, he's been there. And we want to utilize the park for our celebration of life. We're going to be cooking. All you guys are welcome to come by. It would be honored if you guys did come by. You grab a plate and show your respect for it.
Thank you.
And thank you.
We apologize for your loss and the community.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, ma'am, and I just want to let it light up too. This season, we will be ready to go. If you have anything from us.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, do we have, I think, what, are there any questions?
Well, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
But also, it's my understanding, we're being asked to waive the fee. Is that, that's what we're supposed to vote on?
But, but you're saying it's a lack of.
Are we asking for asking a poll out to the people of the park right now?
Okay, that's what I understood. And I reviewed the application and I can't find it immediately, but it's, it was a fee of $50 and that's what we're being asked to waive.
But this is a class C, it's not a class D.
Right, well, it's, okay, so should I have a motion for that?
You're welcome, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I move that we approved the request to waive the fee for the class C event in Eagle Lion Park this Saturday, May 10th, requested by Missy Parsons. And, oh, sorry, ma'am.
Okay, we have a proper motion in a second. Commissioners, should we have any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Parsons.
Yes, ma'am.
One of my questions, so don't be surprised about it. I mean, I'm really glad you're there, but we just happen to live across from the park and aren't able to use it. So I'm very familiar with the event.
Okay.
So one question I had, and I couldn't necessarily tell from the application, do you want the whole park? For example, there's tennis courts and there's a children's play area.
We mainly want this, the area with the bain and the flags.
That, okay, do you want, so in other words, it's mine with you, if the neighborhood children.
Absolutely.
Or the people who play pickleball.
Absolutely, that's fine.
You just want the areas for the cooking.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, I noticed that it says you're expecting, you know, like 50-plus people.
Yes, ma'am.
And we just, you know, got this last night and I sent a brief email to the inner city manager. The rules of the park actually say that you're not supposed to, you know, park on the park property.
Right.
So I was hoping that maybe the inner city manager, because I don't know places that you can park.
We'll have a 500 gallon smoker that'll be behind our rescue van. And it will never be detached, it will be detached, attached to the van at all times.
Right, that's, so.
Do you know where you're going to place that? Where, you don't know yet?
Not yet. I'm going to see if it's the city's decision.
Okay.
Okay, and so our inner city manager will figure that out, right? Where we're supposed to go.
Okay. I would think if anybody's going to keep the smoker safe, it would be.
Yes. Right, I don't, I don't have to worry about, about that. So anyway, it's a lot of work and very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
So, of course, as the lawyer, I will get to bring up topics that may not be necessarily talked about in every scenario. But my question simply is, do you have criteria for determining when you waive a fee at park?
I'm not, not, I'm aware of, not that we've ever, not that we've ever, unless they requested it. Often times are 501(c)(3)'s. They are, they're waived, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And we are a follow-up.
You are a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I amend my motion?
Yes.
So my motion is that we approve. So my motion is that we approve the waiver of the fee for the use of Eagle Island Park members or persons requested by the first organization for a celebration of life for the deceased founder.
Thank you.
And that we waive the fee in view of the fact that these people are firefighters and first responders and provide a valuable public service, giving up their time.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, does that, does that?
You know, it's only $50 and I'm not going to make a big issue of it, but if you have, I don't know if your fee is set by ordinance, I guess it is, so, right?
You know, I think, I think, I can see we have, we have a paragraph here that talks about the fees. And, and maybe we need to strengthen them up a little bit, tighten them up a little bit. The fees and charges and application deadlines. Yeah, so we, we probably should put that on.
Yeah, my, my point simply is, as far as I'm concerned, you can waive the fee for everybody. But if you don't have criteria by which you determine whether or not to waive the fee, then basically it becomes essentially a discretionary act with no particular guidelines, which is kind of the definition of arbitrary in degree.
Right, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So I'm not against it at all. I'm just saying that probably you should look at your ordinance and because certainly have no problem with your determining if this was a very worthwhile function, but the next people that come in front of you may feel like theirs is very worthwhile too, for different reasons. And it puts you in the position of basically saying one's worthwhile and one's not as worthwhile. That's really not a really great position for you to be in. So my, my point simply is, if you have criteria for deciding when to waive the fees, then you go by the criteria and so long as you follow those guidelines, you're, you're okay. Again, it's only $50, I hear you. But with that, I'll, I'll leave it, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, when you look at paragraph six, when you go down to the guideline, it talks about that city manager or city commission waives, could waive the fee. Also, if you are a resident of the city, within the city limits or corporate city limits, that you could also waive the usage fee. So you're right, we need some criteria. So, but at this time, we currently have a motion in front of us. And a second, do we have any further discussion? Thank you. Tricia, bring that to our attention.
All right.
We followed this order after the city blacklist.
Now, if you would please do a roll call.
We didn't waive the fees.
I said we mollyed them.
I'm sorry, you probably didn't molly that for us then because our position was basically, I paid fees out of my own pocket for groups because they were worthwhile and we didn't.
And they don't, and that's probably what we don't do too much, telling them.
But, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Zeta?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gory?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
And Mayor, if I could, I don't understand the joke by Commissioner O'Gory. Attorney Collins has been with the city in lack at various times, correct? In a couple of capacities.
Maybe he didn't clear if I was, he has been with.
Well, if you were the city manager, you've been there attorney, as I said, it was a joke.
That was a joke, I was a joke too. So you're right, I've been associated with the city on a couple of different levels.
That was a, a just little tiny black, Commissioner O'Gory.
And I threw, I was taking the mud on some other scenarios as well because for the reasons I just said, very unfair.
That's what you're there for, to keep us, to keep us in line. And we greatly appreciate that, so thank you. So we need to put that on our, on our radar, please. Okay, with that, it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we just thank you for doing this, we're done, and for the community, and we wish you much success.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open it up to Captain Nasri. Captain Nasri, you're here.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor and council, would you like to start with our official report first? And then we'll go into the actual reporting. First, we'll start off on our briefing. These are again, these are the reports that are gathered that are reported to FDLE for your crime stats for the city. The two of them here, the first one, I can't get the location because of law, the regular Sloan identified as a subject of theft with a bicycle. The second one was a vehicle burglary theft. This gentleman decided to go break into someone's car while they were in the Dollar General and deputies were quickly arrived there, chased him in the woods, and found him out back and recovered said property. Pretty much that for the present city. I'm trying to congratulate it. Honey's in Bay, am I, I'll show you the next slide, the next couple of slides here. We're still, I think we're five months into the, into the year and we still have 100% solvency rate on our crime presence. That's pretty good. Honey's in Bay Lane, juvenile felony east. Honey's in rear place, but placed from the lead vehicle slowed to turn on the rocket lane. The day we got the catfish festival, all the festivities that were going on in Bay Lane, y'all was paying attention here while this guy was turning and just ran to the back of him. Some of Magnolia, down south on Magnolia Street. This vehicle was running to stop sign and basically runs into some of the trial on Yell Seventeen.
Just bring it right into Seventeen on Magnolia?
Yeah.
You do that too?
I'm on track.
Oh, okay.
This is a little funny. I had some record high calls for service this year. Two hundred and sixty-three calls for service, seventy-one is being traffic stops, two traffic accidents, seventeen reports, thirteen arrests, and three arrests, one affidavit, charging affidavit, so.
Seven statements. So what's the other, run your cell? Increase, so the ninety years of calls for service.
Yeah, and that's just a bunch of ways you never know. And I'm trying to go through and decipher, like, was it a certain house residence or something like that, and it looked, didn't make any sense to it other than we just had, oh, 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 oh. This is your six-month comparisons. Kind of where we stand, we're about a 200% increase going from one to, well, 100% increase from one to two. And that's all I have for that. Any questions?
Questions? Did you get the bicycle back? Did you retrieve the bicycle?
No, it's probably in a strack yard somewhere. So now we'll talk about the investigation this evening. Understands, understand that I am very limited on information as we were just a small part of this investigation. The sheriff's office is comprised of about 150 more employees. We sent six people to this operation to assist agents of the federal government, which is HSI, Homeland Security, and War Customs and Border Patrol. Some people were seeing FHP was there as well. Where again, we were just an assistant, assisting in this operation. Our goal in this operation was just to stop vehicles. From what I can see just now, in the South Buckham area, there were 51 traffic stops conducted by our deputies. Only 10 of them were in Crescent City. Again, details that I have are very limited just because this is not our investigation. I don't want to compromise the investigation of the federal government. The governor has been persistent to say that local law enforcement, local and state law enforcement will assist federal agencies when they come into whatever jurisdiction they're in to do whatever they're, they're going to do. And this specific one, we started this morning, assisted them, assisting in our street crime unit. Again, it was a six-man team, who I understand. And any questions you have in there, I'll try to answer the best I can. Our instructions were to establish probable calls on vehicles and stop them. If there were undocumented individuals in those, call the agents to them and they will take over the traffic stop.
Just commissioners, do we have any questions before I open that for comment?
No, I, I read, the sheriff posted a statement online and I've read that, the thing that particularly interested me was if I get this correctly, that there were no personnel going into the schools. Did I read that right?
That is, that is false, as far as I'm aware. There's no personnel going into schools, no, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying.
They were in the line, they were in the pickup line?
No, not on school property at all.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure I have that correct.
And we, the city, were not, just, just for clarification, I would say we, the city, were not privy to any of this information?
No, and as soon as I was able to release anything to you, Mayor, that's when I made the phone call, you to release to say, hey, there's going to be a high level of law enforcement in South Buckham, to be exact.
Well, I was out of the city this morning. I got up at six and we were out of the city, I was going to Orlando, so I was very taken back from, on the way back from Orlando. There was all kinds of stuff going on here. And I did get a report that there were some, I want to say ICE, I guess, that had gone to this school and what you're, you're saying that that was not true.
If they went outside of what I know now, the schools in the South end of Crescent City, meaning, you know, Milton Murney and Crescent City, you were saying your high school, they were not at those locations.
Okay.
On school property.
Well, the reason I ask is, you know, people, you know, perceptions, you know, 99% of people believe, and if people actually believe that that's what happened, and then all of a sudden they read something like, oh, no, we didn't do that, you know? It sometimes just doesn't come across as being truthful, I guess. I, I trust you because I know you, okay? I've known you for years. But there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people that don't know you. You're, to them, you're just Captain Nasri, the sheriff, and this is the first time that they've ever seen something like this come through Crescent City.
I haven't seen it since the 90s.
I, I know it, and, and you can go ahead and explain some of that history.
Unfortunately, I wasn't here tonight. I was actually working for a different company. I wasn't in law enforcement at the time, or I hope you retired right now. I didn't get here until 2003. So, but I do recall that operation happening. As a matter of fact, I was in construction work at the time and was in, doing stuff there. And the agents would come up to our job sites and there would be nobody left, they were the takeoff run, and they would just go grabbing people, it was still pretty wild. That was my personal experience with that many years ago. This operation, unfortunately, I had no part of. That was our street crime unit. Again, we sent what manpower we could to assist them, which was the six deputy sheriffs, from what I understand, and a sergeant and five deputies and a sergeant. And unfortunately, I was not part of this actual operation.
Will there actually be some type of report that comes out on this, or?
If it is, it will be by the federal government. And I would have to refer to those because we didn't, we, as far as, unless we found somebody who was committing an actual crime or we issued citations or anything like that, that's what we would, we would have done. Our involvement in this certain incident was just to do the same thing we've been doing for years, was really nothing different. We established probable calls on everybody, we write people tickets, we take people to jail, nothing has ever changed with us. One of the things that I got that was pretty concerning to me was some individuals were worried that there was possibly maybe crimes going on in the home. And I'll give you a kind of a scenario. Maybe there's some very bad domestic violence going on in a home. And somebody in that home may not be documented. In fear of us coming to their home and taking them away from their home, they're not willing to call law enforcement. I do not want that to happen. We have, if there's detainers on individuals or warrants for people's arrest, we have to take said people into custody. But until then, nothing changes with us. So I just want everybody to be clear on that. Until a law is changed or a law is passed that requires us to do something else, then we will do that, that, whatever that law is. But as far as right now, we do things, nothing different than we did before. The only thing different, this is, a federal agency came to the public county, asked for our assistance, we have to assist, assist them, and they left earlier today. Questions are going to be, questions have been asked of me, is anyone coming back? I don't know. Why Crescent City? I've been in Crescent City for 24 years. And when I want to go do certain things, if I want to work drugs or if I want to work, whatever it is, there are certain areas that are target rich environment. Crescent City, in my 24 years of doing this job, has always had a lot of undocumented individuals. I see them almost on a daily basis. So again, we're not changing anything we do. Again, a federal agency comes into public county and they want to do whatever type of operation, we have to help them. And that's kind of all I, all I have.
Do you have more questions? Do you know where they took these people?
I do not. It's not 100%, and I would only be speculating. And I don't know that number.
Was the criterion, was it just undocumented or was it undocumented with other issues?
I can't answer that.
That's one, and we respect that, we respect that.
We should have to get, have to some more comment. The hel, I think it was helicopters that were overhead. So the morning and evening, that was very noisy. It was very intimidating. And I know I saw on social media, early in the day, some people were afraid that there was a, you know, like one very dangerous criminal out there. People heard all the helicopters. It was a little bit scary, so I was very appreciative of when the sheriff's office posted an official announcement. Just, it didn't make it any less noisy or intimidating, but at least people would know that, you know, they weren't, they weren't looking for an armed murderer or something like that. But anyway, it was, it was quite impressive and a little disconcerting.
I understand that's wrong.
So HSI, Homeland Security, they were only in the air for, and again, this is just a speculated time, from what I know, was only in the air about 45 minutes. The other helicopters you were seeing, I've seen them as well. That's the United States Navy.
Right, well, there were, I, I just looked out, I was very.
They were out there too, especially later on, they were out there.
They, they sounded, they were very large and heavy.
They were the United States.
The one this morning was out there about seven, a little after seven o'clock. Take the garbage, you know, it's just.
Yeah, you could hear, anyway, that, I thought that announcement was at least helpful in that regard. Thank you.
So at this time, if you're, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment. I'm going to start with Tricia Bratton. Tricia, if you would please come forward, state your name and your address, if you, if you please. Or you remember, you don't have to state your address, that's a church discretion.
I can't see over this thing.
That's okay, I can either, but it's fine, it's fine. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. My name's Tricia Bratton. My address is 507 Orange Avenue. Just down the street here. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the raid that happened this morning. And I do feel like it was a raid because that's the way it felt with the helicopters and all the numerous police presence in this small town that we have. I filmed two different stops by the police. Fortunately, both of them were let go, but Border Patrol was there. There were, there was a dog sniffing, there was a drug sniffing dog there. There were state troopers and there were Putnam County sheriffs surrounding both of the different cars that I was a witness to. I want to know a few things about exactly, and I know you can't speak to some things, but I think as citizens, we have a right to know certain things. And one is, when was the information relayed that this ICE raid was going to happen? Why exactly did, was Crescent City the place chosen? After all these years, since nothing like this has happened since the 90s? We were told recently that unless they were looking for particular people, they would not be doing these massive raids. This one felt very random to me. The people that were stopped were dark-skinned people, some who were driving by with tools in their pickup trucks. I did not see a traffic violation. Now, I didn't see the immediate beginning of the stop, so I don't know exactly what happened, but it just looked very random to me. I don't, I don't want to say random, I think very directed. It looked very directed at a particular population. So those are the questions that I have. Also, I would like to know how many people were detained. I think we have a right to know that. How many of our neighbors have been taken away? And that's all I have, thank you.
Captain, you might as well say it, okay? We should pull up the sheriff.
Yeah, that's fine. Questioning whether or not we had probable calls on a traffic stop, it would be a, an officer complaint. So if you had a complaint on a specific incident where someone was stopped, I would encourage you to call any complaint. But that was our instructions, that we were to establish probable calls whenever you'd be stopped. What was the other question? What was the other question? I do not know how many people were detained. Our time's up. We do not know how many people were detained, so I just am not joking that at all. We don't know how many people were detained at all. I, I don't know. I know it was a limited number. It was a small number. It wasn't two or three hundred. It was a very small number. But I don't know that actual number. One is a lot, so I don't know what that number is. And like I said, a lot of the questions you're gonna have are gonna be for either border control or homeland security.
I think her other question was, when will we, listening?
As soon as I can relieve, as soon as I can give the mayor information of what's going on in Crescent City, or the mayor, what's going on in Park or Black or wherever, whenever I can do that, I can. I, I am not willing to go to jail for violating any code of ethics by releasing information ahead of time on an investigation. That would put me in jail.
So, just so I.
Inform you.
I can't rule out you.
And I will share with you that, just like Commissioner DeVito said, I mean, I was out taking my garbage, saw the helicopter out there, and did not know either. I thought just exactly what Commissioner DeVito said. And obviously, somebody's on foot somewhere, and they're chasing on four. It was just, you know, practice, a practice operation. So, I also didn't know until someone came to my house, who works at my house, and he shared with me what he saw as he drove through town today, so.
And then again, what other agencies done, what, how they conduct business? I don't know how that is, but if my deputies stepped out of bounds in what they were supposed to be doing, what they were instructed to do, I would encourage whomever that was that was involved in that traffic stop, because I can figure it out. They got a lot of cameras on. To file an officer complaint, and we'll see if, take it to the end and see if that was not a battle trap and stop, or whatever the case may be.
I think, Mayor, can I just clarify something? So, well-understanding Captain to say about, you were asked about releasing information. It's not your investigation, it's a federal investigation. So, you have, when you say you would go to jail, you have to have authority from the federal agencies that are organizing that investigation. Did I get that right?
So, yes. Actually, I don't have a lot of information too, at least, on some of the questions.
You're limited by, it has to be their authorization to you.
I think that goes in hand though, to your own agency. If you know something's going on and you're told not to, doesn't that go your.
That's kinda how it works, and it's like when you say that we're ready, it was an investigation. When we have a drug investigation, if it was a couple of the drug dealers up and say, hey, we're on our way, it's probably gonna be a good thing for us, and it's unfortunate that it had to happen that way. But again, when I knew about this operation, I can't rule out that. We always have to pre-plan, pre-plan things before we do them.
It sounds to me like people are shocking all kind of deal, you know? I mean, you can have an investigation, and you can come in and pick people up without all the noise, I guess, especially helicopters. I mean, you know, helicopters, they are, you know, they're like, wow, what the heck's going on? And did the helicopters land and take anybody into them and take off with them? No, you know, they're just here to make noise, and you get everybody rattled. And so, you can tell them, our reporters, they did a very good job with that. But it's very unnecessary. They go in, they do what they need to do, and they do it in a professional manner. I don't think you would have heard a thing about it, really. You've done this before with different things that you've been working on. You come in, the next day you tell us about it. We didn't even know it didn't happen the day before because you do it very professionally. And this just sounded like it was a shocking all kind of event. I guess because it's the federal government now. I don't know. But that's my take on it, from what I've heard from everybody.
Right, unfortunately, when they make their, you know, their game plan, when they, when they conduct their investigations, ask for our assistance, we have to.
Yeah, no, I understand. Anybody who.
I got you.
That's just what we.
And Commissioners also, please know that Captain Osory, in the four years of our work with Captain Osory, that oftentimes, we're not given any information until after the fact. And that's for our protection, for the sheriff's protection, and for those that are involved. Everybody's protection. So, it's just, so, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we clarify that. At this time, Nancy, if you could come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
I may just ask you to direct me then to the right direction.
That's fine. You can do it anyways. State your name.
Sure. Nancy Wilde, 237 Moore Drive, White Road, East Blackcomb, Florida. Recent retiree. I taught at Miller and at Milton-Burney Elementary School for a number of years. And have received communications from teachers that were concerned this morning about the helicopter. It is state testing time, so to have that noise and the concern was upsetting for a number of staff members there. Also, not having information about how they should proceed. And I've contacted several of the school board members to get some clarification about why they haven't had any kind of direction, in case something like this happened. But my main concern was with the helicopter. If it was just for traffic stops, why would you have a helicopter? At ten o'clock, I was by the high school and saw ten highway patrolmen, sheriff's cars, so about ten, and I think actually a couple more went by after that. But to see that many going by, to hear from teachers that were concerned, to hear of a helicopter, and then to be told that it's just with traffic stops, doesn't quite match up to me. So, do I need to contact then Homeland Security to ask about the helicopter situation? The purpose of that?
Do you want me to step up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you step up, just step up, and you can get it on.
I don't have the full number.
That's all right.
I wonder if I can actually do that over there. Helicopters are made for what's, I think, again, helicopters are made for a lot of things. They're made for people who take off running on foot. They have, they work great for medevac. Medevac, if one of their officers goes down and get injured, they are able to chase vehicles a lot easier than we are from in the sky. I mean, they can get twelve, fourteen hundred feet in the air, and they can watch a car go wherever it's gonna go, where people get out, where they're gonna go to. It's a very useful resource. I was actually in ours the day before yesterday, and we actually flew by a school. And I was waving at the kids, out playing in the soccer field out there. So, I understand the use of a helicopter and what it's there for. But again, this was not, again, I'm gonna reiterate, this was not our investigation. So, this was from Homeland Security and the Customs of Border Control, and I believe the Fuller National Guard.
Thank you. Quickly, I also spoke with a highway patrolman here today and asked a little bit about what was going on. He mentioned that in the last four years, that we've been pretty lax about immigration in the country and this area, and that this next four years, there will be more of a concerted effort, more presence. And so, my concern is, what does that look like for our community? You know, what does that look like for our schools, for businesses, for, you know, our people here? So, and I know you can't answer that. You made that super clear. But I didn't wanna say I did speak, I, you know, I wanted to ask the question. For someone, and that, that response concerned me, and I wasn't sure, you know, what to take from it.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know what that impacts, I could, over the next four years, and that's. You're the first one that I've heard that problem, so.
I directed it to a highway patrolman, just to get some clarification. I didn't wanna jump to any conclusions, but I wanted to get more information.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Jennifer Cox. Please come forward. State your name or address, if you don't.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Cox. I live in Bloom Park. I'm also a retired teacher from Miller and Milton-Burney. I love this community down here. I wanted to address you all on something, on a national level. We know that the federal agents have caught up multiple US citizens and many, many people here legally. And these people are being sent out of the country with no due process. We know in the last two weeks, there were even three children sent out. Again, no due process, which our Constitution awards to everyone, not just someone here with legal documentation. I wanted to hear, I would hope, was hoping to hear from this commission that there will be some effort made to assure the residents and business owners in our community, especially our Hispanic neighbors, that they are welcome here. They, we know, you all know, how important they have been to keeping our community vital, new businesses, wonderful people. And I'd like to hear the commission saying that our neighbors of whatever nationality are welcome, safe, and supported here.
Ms. Cox, I will, permission, if you're okay with that, I would speak, I would speak to that. That I know from my perspective, and each commissioner can share that, that we embrace everyone in this community. And our heart goes out to the families, and they are the backbone of a lot of what goes on in our community. And we recognize that. I recognize that. And I see that we've got teachers here, and I know that's the one thing that concerns all of us, and that's our babies in the community. We had a lot of partners in here on Friday, Commissioner Burton, and and we had a lot of commission meetings. We had three mock commission meetings. And just what, you know, from our Hispanic community, you can tell that what they added to the community and to think that they have any other, it breaks my heart, and.
And you know they were terrified with the helicopter?
And I know, and I know. And that was, and Captain and I, I mentioned that to Captain too, that, you know, it's, you know, it's everyone. But I, I know, I take great pride in this commission and that we have embraced, we embrace this community. And Commissioners, do you want to say anything as well?
I would just say, write your congressperson, write your senators, write everybody. They need to hear this from us. I mean, we went to Tallahassee, and we talked about all this stuff there, but this is the federal level. You know, this is coming from the highest office, but you need to tell everyone that this is hurting us, and this is what it feels like to be on the end of this. This is just on the news. This is happening right now, today, to your neighbors. And that's the only way we, you know, what we can do. I know I already have, but I'm beginning to do that, so.
This is a small community, and we're really a privileged knit community. I mean, I respect everybody in the community, and not everybody respects me. But, you know, for the most part, you know, I have to say, everybody that I've been contacted with and I've worked with here, they're just wonderful people. And, you know, I think about our Main Street, for example. Last year, most of our volunteers were honor students from the high school. Most of those folks were Hispanic. I hope they're here this year. I don't know if they will be or not, and I can understand why they wouldn't be. Okay, because definitely, they're not getting in fair shape right now. But you know that I'm out there trying to do all I can. And whether it's here in Crescent City, or whether it's on the national scene, I definitely will continue to be there for you, if you want.
Thank you for being here. I guess I was gonna hold this suggestion until the end, but my thought was, and I know there are other people who want to speak. Number one, most of this is out of control by the local government, like Crescent City. The most we can do is really give you an opportunity to come and share your concerns and get the information from, of law enforcement as best you can. And in those capacity, it would, law enforcement is really, because I understand that acting in their capacity is sheriff's office, not for the law enforcement that we hired them for. So, I think Commissioner Roy is absolutely right. If you have concerns about the effects on children of the community, or economically, there are lots of places you can go online. I'm sure, as you're a retired teacher, you're very good at this. Some of this is coming, as Captain Osory said, from the governor. We have governor, you have a state representative, and a state senator. And as well, we all here have the US congressperson, and we have two US senators. So, and they also, if you want contact information for the Department of Homeland Security or any other federal agency, it would be your US congressperson's office. Hopefully, someone there could provide you with that information, if they will. I have no idea. So, you know, just thank you for being here. I would hesitate to say that the commission has any kind of official position because there have been a lot of changes to federal and state laws. And to protect everyone in this community, we have to be very careful to comply with those. But we've always been a very welcoming, and as Commissioner Burton said, very friendly community. You taught in our school, so, so, you know, so just thank you.
Go forward.
Okay, they just said that they were.
Jennifer Cox.
Okay, my daughter's a teacher. Terrific. Yes, I am. I'm a retired educator. But I would like to say that I agree with what everyone has said. And I kinda like felt like it was a raid too, because hearing those helicopters, it really upset me. It really, it drove me to a place. But I would like to say, on behalf, my daughter was an educator. She was very concerned about her students on today. What went on in their classroom, trying to support the kids, and we feel safe. It's very man, by the way. Okay, and I also wanna say that not only did it affect those kids, but I want you all to know that the work that the people are doing on the new schools is affecting that area also. Because everybody was gone. There was no one there to say the tale, like a ghost town. So, we all know that it is affecting, if you have any heart at all, it's affecting everyone in this community. So, I might even have some students out there that I taught, waiting. You all know, I care for everyone in this community, you know, and it goes out. So, I do agree with what everyone has said. And I do, I'm saying prayers for everyone. We have to do that, and I swear to God, it's, and we're understanding, so that we do what's right.
And give them some information, if they answer the teachers, as to what they wanna do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please be.
I also can't see you, so. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. You know, I spoke to Captain Osory. We have worked together several, for several years, and he knows that I trust him to take care of our community. But today, they feel like we were being hunted. And I did actually ask him personally the question. He said that they were stopping everybody for probable, looking for probable cause. The probable cause that I saw, I heard in our text messages, was that you had to either look like you were going to work, or you looked like me, and we were targeted. There is no way that all of us collectively had a traffic violation taken. All the cars that were stopped. It is not possible. Because as soon as you see that a police officer is up the road, you start driving better. So, just for that, do you know that that's not how it went down? So, I do know that this is, this is coming from the federal government, but at the local level, I just cannot believe that our local agencies are just going to let the law slide and do whatever you're told. We recite the pledge of allegiance every morning in our school, every time we start a meeting. It ends with justice for all. This was not, not justice at all. I was feeling threatened, and I have no reason to. What do I have to do? With my credential certificate on my forehead, or what? My daughter, my kids were upset, my grandkids were upset. I do know that they. I do know that they did not go into the school because I did call the superintendent, but what they did do was follow our bodies and stop, as the parents were coming into our schools, and stop people. And how do you think those children feel? And that affected all of our children, not just the children that look like me. So are we really gonna stand and allow the lack of respect for the law? We cannot have it both ways. Are we law-abiding citizens, or are we not? We cannot say that we serve both gods, and I do know your child is difficult, I do know you cannot, say, I just know that somewhere, somebody has to stand up and say, "This is illegal," because it was illegal.
That's right.
It is illegal. And for all of us to feel like that, thank you. It's heartbreaking. This is the place I call home. Today, I did not feel like this place brought me back. I do not feel safe sending my grandkids to school tomorrow. My daughter doesn't want to be outside. And I tell you, we have nothing to fear. We're not undocumented. And all of our families felt exactly the same way, and I am really upset. To me, this time is personal. And I just wish that our law enforcement, our elected officials, everybody stand up and say, "This is not lawful." If they want to come and pick up people who are here undocumented, like you said, there are ways to do that. This was not an investigation. This was a hunting, this was a hunting ground today. And let's not call it something else, please. And I don't wish that we can stand, I thank my three colleagues that spoke before. It feels really good to know that we're not standing alone, but we really do need our community to be here, not just say it. We know you're here. You know that. I know all of you personally. But I do need everybody to stand up for what's right. And this is not right. And if we don't do it, and nobody does it, who are they gonna come for next?
That's right, that's right.
This is the United States of America. This is the place that I always told my family back in Mexico, "Oh, the law is respected in this country." How can I say that now with a straight sense? How can I even say the pledge when I know that it's a lie? It's not justice for all, and it is not blind. And just being targeted because you look like some, you know, you have certain, the way you look, my black, I cannot change that. So I refuse to be hunted down, and I really am upset that my whole community is being hunted down. Today was here, today it was not on the news, but this has been happening throughout the country. So when our elected officials, our law enforcement are gonna stand up and say, "This is illegal." You may be directing us to something, but it's just like if somebody told you to go kill somebody. It's just as illegal. So let's just, I'm asking for all of your support, because we are not gonna be able to do it alone. We need you. Thank you.
Okay, this is a time that I know some people came in late, and I just wanna make sure. I know you've got a lot that you need to let go of. And open it up if you just can. I don't have a card on you, but if you'd like to say something.
Good evening.
Good evening. You said your name.
And I'm sorry I was late.
No, you were late. It's just you didn't get your card.
I was on Facebook a few minutes ago, and I saw there was a meeting. I have to be there. My name is Luis Carrero, and I'm a resident of Olota. And I'm a teacher at Crescent City High School. Been there for three years now, but totally twenty years in Panchamie, in the school district. And my students came in, and they found me anymore, because I don't have access to Facebook while I'm working. I'm actually teaching. And I was surprised to hear of all of their stress. And I'm like, "Don't worry, you're second and third generation, so you should be fine." But that wasn't the case. We were being targeted because of how we looked. And then also, I had this anxiety, because my daughter's out there, she's driving, and she looks Hispanic. And is she gonna get pulled over because she's being targeted? It was just, I could not concentrate. I'm so glad my kids were testing. So if I couldn't concentrate, I know my students couldn't concentrate. And so where is humanity? Where is our human rights if we're being targeted because of how we look? And then I saw another one, my neighbor, a person that I know, he got pulled over, and he had no reason to be pulled over, so we're filing complaints, because we want that investigated. And so where are the human rights? And we, like she mentioned, we are here, law-abiding citizens, we're educating our community, not just Hispanics. Everybody that comes into our classroom, what are we standing in all of this? You know, what are we doing about it? And thank you for the information. I'm glad to be here and learned what can I do, what can I help my community understand. Let's run it, because what about the second and third generation now, a very, and small amounts? But I was so surprised just listening to the fact that he's spent for pulling over because of how they look. And my dad is one of them. My dad was talking to me the other day, and he got his pictures everywhere in case he gets pulled over. That happened back in the early nineties. I was a young child when that happened, and I was afraid. And I can only imagine our kids now, and why is it happening again? Why are we digressing? Why is this country coming to this, when they used to be back in the eighties and nineties? Why again? So I'm just here, I'm very unhappy, stressed for my students, because I love every one of them. Whatever color they are, whatever language they speak, I love all of them. And I know it was a lot of stress today, a lot of worry. And the helicopter was unnecessary. It was hard being, like she said, we were being hunted. So therefore, we needed a helicopter because we're hunting people here. It was unnecessary. So that's my point of view.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something. You know, I've just recently been in contact with the Farmers Coalition of Southeast, I think, Florida. I believe that's the correct lingo. And I know Captain Asori has talked to the small, just a couple of groups there. But, you know, they're throughout Volusia, Putnam, and also Lake County. They are, and they're a fairly large group, from what I understand. So right now, we are kind of trying to work with them, okay, to help some of their needs and stuff around our community and around other different counties. So I'm gonna do this, Beatrice. If you would just leave your name with Trish, I'm telling you, we can contact you, okay? And get you involved, I think, with the right people and right people to be with to try and fight some of what's going on.
Thank you.
So please, please do that. Please stay with her. I'm gonna say, you know, this is gonna be a tough road. It's a tough road. As she said, this conversation with one of our employees here last week, you know, you're in a tough spot. You're in a tough spot because of the color of your skin. You're easy to pick out. I just think it's an awful thing.
And it shouldn't.
It shouldn't be, but it is. At this point in time, it is.
We have gone through that in the US.
Well, you have, but if it goes around, I don't wanna get into too much more, but it is a very difficult public situation.
It is. Okay. Do we have any other speakers?
Can I say something?
Yes, if you can forward.
I wanna speak to you as an employer, from that point of view. A short history, ten, twelve years ago, my company employed sixty people, almost fifty-five of them are Hispanics. In that era, you have to give a report every year of all of your employees. We would get six, eight social security's come back. They don't match. And what are you supposed to do? You're supposed to try to get them to match. You never heard from anybody after that. Now, today, technology is very different. As an employer, it's really impossible to hire an illegal. Why? Because when they fill out the paperwork, you put that social security out there number, it'll come back as a good number, a duplicate number, or a bad number. And if it's a bad number or a duplicate number, you can't hire the person. So that's where we are today. Now, there's a period in here where there are no doubts of leas, illegals, you know, floating around. But that's where we are today. You might ask yourself, "Why is this going on?" That's the question.
Do we have any other speakers before I place one comment? Seeing no one else come forward, I'm gonna place a public comment. I have the commission to thank each and every one of you. This is heart wrenching. And I know, I grew up in Volusia County, and went to Taylor High School back in the eighties, seventies and eighties. I saw what happened back then to people that I, and I just, I think that came back today. I kind of had some vision for that today. And like they, you've been encouraged by my fellow commissioners, reach out to the governor, reach out to the president, reach out to your senators, your representatives, your congressmen, and your US senators. Just reach out to anybody that you can. And with that, just thank you.
Mayor Cadet, so, the mayor and my fellow commissioners, we're a little bit remiss, we're limited in what we can do. And I also want to make sure that we don't fall foul of any state federal laws, so I would ask for the advice of our attorney. But we did hear from some people here who were concerned about illegal stops, and the sheriff said that they could make a complaint. But I would like to talk to Mr. Holmes and see whether it would be appropriate for us to make a transcript of what was said and review that later, and see if there's anything that would be appropriate for the commission to look at and see if we had any kind of position or comment that we wanted to make to any appropriate agency. I mean, I just don't know. But is it acceptable? I can ask you.
I mean, there's nothing inappropriate about you making a transcript of other comments, if that's a question. There's no, there's nothing about that that would be inappropriate.
Right, because I would like to do that, so we could review what was actually said, and then see if there's anything that we would wanna talk about at a later meeting.
I don't know. It's complicated.
Do we have a complete transcription of, is that what you're looking for?
Just a public comment.
Thank you, Lisa.
Not necessarily. I mean, it is on record, on YouTube. You can actually reference exactly where it is on YouTube, if you wanna. Plus, we'll get the, you know, when you see it back on YouTube, you'll actually have the feeling instead of reading it.
You know, it's, it's actually not the passion that I want. It's what are the actual circumstances that are being complained of. And my thought was, if we had it written out, we could review it and see if there's anything that we should be concerned with as a commission.
I think we've got bullet, just concerned for a transcription, because transcription, when you say transcription, that's word for word. And that might be a little difficult with our audio, but I mean, the high points, I can see the high points in the plan, so I'm just concerned about the transcription.
So we'll give it some thought.
One more positive note, all of you teachers out there, and former teachers out there. I just want to share with you how that last Friday, we had, like I said, kindergartners, all the kindergarteners here. And to share this real fast before we get into this, because, thank you, staff, for all of your participation. Commissioner Burton was there, Commissioner DeVito came in, and she spoke about what it was like to be a commissioner. It was just a really neat experience, and we had a mock commission meeting. And, you know, all these kindergarteners, the first class, the first couple of classes or the first session, they were just, they were outstanding. They had not gone to Dixie and gotten cupcakes yet. The second group had just eaten their cupcakes, and they were, they ramped it up a little bit. The third group was, yeah. The third group, the sugar had definitely been ingested and it had kicked in. And it was funny, because the third group, at one point, I heard Commissioner Burton say, "I'm trying to conduct a meeting," because we did a mock commission meeting, and we had kindergarteners. And I was so impressed that these children come up here, they sat in our seats, and we had an issue. We said, "There's five minutes, that they want more of playtime." And so we allowed them, I didn't know how I was gonna go back and tell Principal Tiffany that she had to do that and provide five more minutes. But they did get up, we allowed them to come up and speak to that. And anyway, at one point, I heard Commissioner Burton say to one of the children sitting next to me, "Please don't put the microphone in your mouth."
This is my lollipop.
This is my lollipop. And then we had, I had let one child, they got to sit here and have their pictures made. And so I always think there was one that was the mayor and got the gavel, and we looked over, and they had taken the gavel, and they had like slipped down under, and they were like, I was like, "No, honey, that's not how they are supposed to act." That's how a mayor feels sometimes. That's not how they are asked. But what I was so impressed with is that the question was five minutes, more. Their friends got up and spoke. We went, "Five more minutes. We need five more minutes." We asked the teacher to get up and speak, and the teacher spoke and said, you know, "Learning is so important." And so the children, in their decision-making here, we talked about how oftentimes, the best decision is not the popular decision, and how hard it is to make those decisions when you know everybody on the audience wants something different from what you know is probably in their best interest, or what you believe to be in their best interest. We, the commission, have to do that. It's tough. It can be tough. I am pleased to say that all three sessions voted for more learning time and not more recess time.
And it was unanimous.
No, the last group, the last group was four one. But it was, it was just, I just was really impressed. I was impressed with the teachers, with the students at kindergarten, that they could comprehend that, and they did realize. And there was no criticism from their friends when they knew they weren't gonna get five more minutes. They probably knew they weren't gonna get it anyway. Anyway, on a lighter note, thank you to all of you educators, retired and present. We greatly appreciate all that you're doing for our little ones here in the community, and we see that. With that, I'm gonna go ahead, and I'm going to recess this meeting, and I'm going to open up our CRA, our CRA meeting. And so I'll keep you here. We have Tim Jefferson, the executive director of our Door to the Chief program. He'd like to give a brief update on what's going on with the rest of the town members.
Good afternoon. We've been busy at the downtown partnership. I'm just gonna do a quick recap. In January, they moved to the new headquarters. Many of you have been there. And maybe some of the other in the audience would like to come. It's right down on Crescent, you know, on Central Avenue, 310 Central Avenue is our new headquarters. And we've done different things. We had an open house. Of course, the board hired me in February, which was a new position. We had a booth at Soul Fest. We went through training in Hastings about the board directors. We had our open house. We had our We had a mingle of vendors and volunteers that Liz turned it into a potluck, and we had about fifty people there. That was wonderful. In April, we met with a muralist who is gonna help us put some murals around the city. Locations to be determined. We had a booth at the Catfish Festival. We had a movie in the park right before Easter, which was hot, and we had about fifty people attend that. Our Spring Fest was a couple Saturdays ago, with twenty-five vendors and about three hundred people attended it. I just came back yesterday from Deland, I know it's not very far, but we had a Main Street conference there, and the whole topic was economic vitality, which is one of the four pillars of the Main Street program. So it was very good to be educated in that and enthusiastic about what we can do to bring new businesses to this community. Of course, we have some things coming up. We talked about the Historical Society Beverage Stop that's gonna happen, and we're having another mix and mingle. And Pam's Kitchen, which is right next to us, is gonna have a soft opening on the thirty-first of May. So, and then of course, we got Red White and Blue, which we'll talk about a little bit later. But please stop by the office at 310 and see if there's something you can volunteer or ask questions. All right, thank you.
I believe you want to stay there.
Yeah, I'm staying with you.
We have an application.
Oh, all right, I'm going.
We're gonna need a, yes, Commissioner.
So, it's my understanding, the application is in business items?
Oh, no, we put it down, okay, we did the first one, but that's, but I wish.
Well, just wait there, so Liz, yeah, tell me.
You can say, I gotta close out CRA.
I was gonna say, before you close out CRA, I just, well, not just, I know we have our inner city manager who's also supposed to be our CRA manager, so she has really more on her plate than she can do right now. But I was just going to say, we do have grant programs that are supposed to be ongoing in a CRA. And it was mindful that the next regular meeting, maybe we can have a report on our, the progress of our grant programs. So I'm just kind of requesting that we do that for the CRA at the next meeting, at whatever level she's able to give us a report. I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask more this month because there's too much. She's doing a double due.
Okay.
That, that was really all I had to say.
Okay. Anything else before I close out CRA? I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna close out CRA. And reopen our regularly scheduled commission meeting. And so we're down to our business items. And if you come back up, please. We're doing the Crescent City Downtown Partnership, Red, White and Blue in Street Market. We've got a request for street closure and alcohol sales, Saturday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Is that correct? You wanna talk a little bit about that?
Sure. I did attend last year, so it's gonna be very similar to last year's program, where the street is closed, there'll be food vendors and music. And then down by the, by the ramp, the idea is possibly put a tent down there with some seating. And we'll have a beverage station probably up this side of the hill and maybe went down to the bottom.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? I guess in my understanding, that you're gonna close it like last time, it'll go from, from Park.
Park, right.
Down.
Correct.
Okay. And we've got some homeowners there that need notification, that will need notification.
Okay.
And Mayor, I have a question. So, right, and that's usually my question is, the homeowners need to know if you're accommodated. But as well, and this came up in prior year, I don't know if you've been in touch with the people who are possibly planning to reopen a restaurant at a location of the former Siren. I've been told that they're going to be opening there sometime in June.
That's what I've heard also.
Okay. So, and at, at one point, was a different restaurant. The last time we had a street where there was a restaurant there. My concern is that that restaurant be accommodated, if they're serving alcohol or food or whatever, that they not be obscured by the tent of a vendor who's doing the same thing.
But normally, last, the last, in the last event, you want to speak to that.
Well, yeah, so just need to be very mindful of setup, even though it's in a confined area. You'll have three bananas on one end, and then hopefully this new business activated. So you wouldn't want to put an alcohol tent right in front of one of our businesses.
No.
So just, you know, be very mindful of placement of the vendors, especially if, and when this new business, if it's activated during the time of the event. Last Red, White and Blue, we did offer that business, that Commissioner Burton, they were open at the time. We offered them actually the spot in front of their restaurant to put a table out, and they actually even disappeared out in there. So we were just, you know, trying to just accommodate the businesses and just be mindful of places.
Sure. I understand, I think her name is Katie, the one who's gonna operate that business. I haven't personally met her yet, but I could certainly do that. Yeah, no, we wouldn't put a beverage station in front of her place. I think it's closer to Park of the beginning, and then way down at the bottom at the, at the ramp down there. That's where the tent is proposed.
For the alcohol sales?
No, like a seating tent down by the water. So we're not having tents for the alcohol. Well, I guess we will use our pop-ups, yeah. But a bigger tent would be a bigger.
So let's get some, let's get some clarification, say. In the past, you would have a tent that you would serve alcohol, you'd sell alcohol out of, and it was typically worked in front of the apartments, or right there in front of the, down by the apartments. And the air TV, try to stay in the middle so as not to interfere with the three businesses and the other one, and the other business, because both of them are open, and you would sell alcohol. Is that not where, where are you selling the alcohol?
We'll do it wherever you think is best. But my understanding was it was gonna be closer to Park, and we would have a beverage station there, no?
That's where the restaurant is.
Park?
Yeah, right on Park, I mean, it's two, it's two North Park avenues, not here, yeah. So it's two North Park avenues, so it's right there on the corner of Park and Central, that restaurant is, so you're probably gonna need to move down, just move down.
Okay.
East, go east.
Oh, east.
The west, but.
So Park is the street where Siren's is?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we won't be bothered, we have to reduce that, down east.
Somewhere in the middle, yeah, somewhere right here in the middle.
But closing the road is like last year.
I moved up, we approved the application for Red, White and Blue for the CCDV, and included the closure of some avenue between Park and Main Street, and that they accommodate the businesses at the North Park Studios.
Do you also need to approve alcohol sales?
Okay.
Was that motion?
Like a motion?
Yeah.
And how about alcohol sales?
We have a proper motion, do we have a second?
Excellent, awesome.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion?
Just a question, I think I asked our city manager. There's insurance required for this, and the city CRA will make sure that everything's in order before the event, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You have listed on here the VIP tent, what is a VIP tent?
That's the tent that is down by the water. It's a proposed tent that there would be tables and chairs down there for people who pay to be there. And it, it's something that hasn't been clarified, whether the yacht club would want to do that or whether the partnership would do that.
On the city property, on the city property or the county property? Because some of that's county property, that parking lot is county property.
Okay. I'm just going by what the promotions committee discussed. And I want to say that too, it's, even though I'm standing here, it's the promotions committee of, who has done this in the past, who will be actual operations that, that day. So Cindy and people like that.
I don't know.
This doesn't sound like a closed deal yet, you know what I mean? It sounds like it's still kind of evolving.
I guess we just need to have set some parameters. So, Mr. Holmes, I'm gonna ask you, if they were to do a closed event down at the end of the property, I guess down at the, right at the water, water bench. And you're charging to, for people to be there.
That was the idea, yeah.
And you're gonna be serving alcohol at that location also?
Yes.
So you're gonna have two, two spots for alcohol?
Right. And I think they were gonna ask the Katie person to cater.
Katie, okay. You wanna weigh in on that?
You wanna give me a question?
Yeah, or can we do that? Can, can they do that? I mean, that's, normally, everybody gathers down at that end to watch the fireworks. City's the one actually putting the fireworks on this year. So it's a city, it's, it's the fireworks are the city's, the city's events. I just want to make sure that we're not.
So I, I don't know all the parameters, but I think there's precedence for public property being closed off or used by those who pay the fee. But I think that the problem comes in if you're basically closing off all of the area that would be utilized for something like doing fireworks. And you make, and then all of that area is gonna be closed unless you pay a fee, and the fireworks being paid for with public funds. And the property is public property, which I think that's a bad look. And is it illegal now? Probably not, but, but it's a bad look in my opinion. So, and they, for instance, at Blue Crab Festival, there was a tent that was for there, there at the riverfront that was, that you paid for access to. But there was a whole rest of the property down there that you didn't pay for access to. You paid for access to that one area, you got some certain special privileges or acumen. So that was okay, but you had the rest of the area down there that was open to the public. And I think that's, that's the key. You're, you're basically shutting off a public area where people would normally gather to watch a publicly funded event, I think that's wrong.
That's what I'm concerned, if you're gonna put tents up, because families, you have little ones, they put their chairs down there and they sit, so I'm trying to.
My understanding is that, if it's a, just as an example, if it's a hundred feet, it would be maybe twenty, twenty feet of it, of the, of the frontage. It's not gonna be the whole section or even half or even a third, it would be just a portion of it.
So who, who is, who could buy tickets to get into that area?
Anybody?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, that would be my other key. If it's available to anybody to buy, first come, first served or whatever, then, then that would be my other concern would be. So if they're taking twenty percent, is what he, in his example, they're taking twenty percent of the frontage and they're going to have special, in some, some form of special privileges in that, in that location. But you pay to get in, but it's first come, first served, but anybody can pay. I, I think that is acceptable. If they're limiting it, obviously, to only certain people, then that'd be a horrible ballgame.
How about if we, if we come back next month before the event and give you all the specifics?
I think that would be better. So, my understanding is, I think this time around, I really think this is just not quite, it's not quite, it's still, I don't know.
That, well, the tent part is, that's, that's something.
So I think that, I mean, we know the event that we're gonna have, and you're gonna do that. I think what we've got right now is a question of down at the water.
Right.
So he's, and he's, he said he'll come back and bring that to us, because that might be another, that might be.
I wasn't at the board meeting on Monday, because I was at the Main Street. Her, my, my hope was that they would have hired this out Monday, but they didn't.
Okay.
So, so if we want to go ahead and, yes.
I would say we can go ahead and move on now if the commission so, so chooses, just knowing that that last part, just because, and making sure so that we know exactly where you're setting up, because I know I, I have some concerns about having a tent right there and blocking the view of the children, just families often sit down there. In the past, they would do the tiki bar, or VIP was out, all three bananas on the tiki bar. I don't think they're not doing that anymore.
And I also noticed that the alcohol was a two feet determining, yeah, they were six feet.
So, could I make a motion, that we approved?
I currently have a motion.
Are you have?
I have a proper motion. She had a second, she was rescinding her second.
But now that I understand that we're just gonna go with.
Okay. You want a pink or second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, let's wrap this up.
Question, should the motion be approving the things that we've said we approved, subject to, for them to come back, for us to do a final approval of the, just like.
Okay, Chris Laurie, it's your motion, do you want to put that caveat in, if you want to add that caveat?
We're proving, what I've been, the motion was what they did last year. So we're proving that the district party can come back next month and try to.
So that would be.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a caveat to that.
Okay.
So if they don't do it, then they don't have to match us, then just do it in the last.
Okay. Now, of course, if you do a roll call.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Boardy?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Aye.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our city manager contract.
So, I'm sure that all of you have the opportunity to review the contract. I believe that it falls within the guidelines that I was given in, in my directions to negotiate with Mr. Martin. It does use the previous Rudd contract as the substantial basis of the, of the contract. Obviously, the numbers are different, but the majority of the terms are found within or similar to those found within the Rudd contract. The Rudd contract did not have a relocation fee or relocation stipend. Mr. Martin asked for relocation stipend, and given the fact that the commission had approved one in dealing with a previous applicant who did not accept the job, I felt that the concept was valid, the commission had essentially tacitly approved, and the number that Mr. Martin agreed to was significantly less than the one that the commission had approved earlier. And that, I will say that, negotiating with Mr. Martin was, it was a good, for lack of a more descriptive term, experience. It was one where, in my opinion, he demonstrated a willingness to compromise with the attitude of, if I can get the job and show them that I'm worth it, then I'll worry about increased terms later on if, if the situation arises, rather than making a demand or an ultimatum. So the contract in front of him is one that I think he's accepted. I think it's within the scope of what you authorized me to, to negotiate. And so, it's for your consideration.
I do, though, we accept the contract signed by Derek Martin, our senior manager.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, and just for the record, for anybody, this was negotiated by Mr. Holmes. I have spoken, I spoke to Mr. Martin yesterday for the first time, other than the time ever I spoke to him. And to tell him he had received, you know, we were offering him the job, and he is very eager. The paper came out and said he was going to arrive. The paper came out and said he was going to arrive earlier than he was anticipating. He would like to start June 2nd. He shared with us in his interview that he had, he did have a commitment for that week prior. But he is eager. And I've spoken to all of the other, all of the three candidates. They've been paid, I think as of today, for their travel expenses. Quite honestly, one of them actually called me yesterday and I guess he felt he had heard that Derek, one asked me point blank, that Derek, the one that got the offer. And I said yes, and he said he was going to do Crescent City well. And then a gentleman called me last night, one of the applicants called me last night. And he said the same thing. He said, I just wanted you all to know that as much as I was interested in Crescent City, that I think the commission made the choice. So, but everybody had been contacted, but from that.
June 2nd.
Yeah, for June 2nd. So that's, that's when, that's when he was, that's when he was started. So do we have any other discussion?
I just wanted to say, I actually thought that, I thought if there was no objection, the contract was going to be finalized. So obviously, when I saw it, it wasn't. I'm very glad to know that you have talked to Mr. Martin and that he is coming because I was a little concerned.
This is more of an analogy because we have.
No, I understand.
Everybody said to make sure that we've done this, so that it's going to have a final brief.
Sure, of course. But I'm just glad to know that we've spoken with him and that he did not give up on us.
No, he did not. No, no, no.
I was in communication with him soon after. You all know that without pulling the commission, that I asked that the contract be sent to anyone, to all of you. And if any of you had any objection, you could contact me. I heard nothing from anybody. And since it was within the parameters of what you authorized at your meeting, as you kind of alluded to, Commissioner DeVito, everything was there within the parameters other than the fact that you didn't specifically authorize the relocation expense. But as I said, I think, you know, my conversation with him, he said, how about relocation? That's going to cost me years, probably five thousand dollars and relocating. And he said, if you guys have covered two thousand of it, I'll cover the rest. And since you had offered more than that to the previous candidate, I told him that I felt that, that that was within the bounds of what I could authorize. So he's, he's been in communication with me since soon after that. And he's very eager to go.
I was very encouraged by the fact that we got that signed contract two days after we had that meeting. That made me feel good. That was going to be drawn out across the side. I was like, well, this is, and that's why I didn't email you about it. I said, hey, this is great. It's done and signed.
As I said, it was a very pleasant experience. He came and sat down and with a significant other. And that's important because we all know that, that partnership is one that is important to someone's satisfaction in the job and moving to a different community and so forth and so on. And it was, it was a very positive negotiation all the way through. I know she has lived in the ballpark. I know that she's from.
She just, she just lived there. And I talked about that yesterday, about the importance of having a spouse. And in the interim, Christina Marie, thank you. You have done an outstanding job. You really have. You stepped up to the plate. I think we've all been extremely impressed. And you kept everything moving forward. And.
And by the way, is it Seminole?
Here we go again, Seminole. Christina, what are we going to do? Here we are, this is Burgundy and gold. Burgundy and gold again. I had a little Burgundy in me. I was going to say. Okay, with that, we have a proper motion and a second. Ms. Burgundy, please do a roll call.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Ms. Myers?
Aye.
It's so true. Next, we have our fire chief staff, our recommendation. We have interviewed three candidates. You'll see before you a resume for Mr. Joseph Fraser. He's accepted the position. And I believe Chief Crackfield may be here to answer any questions you may have about the upcoming, incoming fire chief. How you doing, chief?
I'm making it. I'm dealing with a back injury right now, so forgive me. I can't sit super long. That's why I was kind of milling out in the hallway. At the time, you know, we've interviewed three candidates. I agree with Scott's recommendation at this time. I think Mr. Fraser will serve as a good chief. Very accredited and interviewed very well. Do y'all have any questions at this time?
Does anybody have any questions?
Where is Clint? Is he in St. John's?
Currently in St. John's County. We only had two qualified candidates of the three, and they both live outside the county.
And Clint, since you know he live there?
I'm not sure. He currently works for Putnam County EMS, so he's in the county on a regular basis.
I saw that, so I assume that.
Yes.
If you guys, if you think this is going to be correct, then I trust your opinion. Do we need to add a motion?
I need a motion, yeah, I need a motion.
I believe that we accept the recommendation of staff and our Mr. Joseph Fraser as our next fire chief.
I'm glad to.
Do we have any discussion?
I just have my questions for the chief.
Yes, sir.
My understanding, this position is twenty hours a month?
Twenty hours a week.
Maybe twenty hours a week.
Yes, ma'am.
Time period. And so he will actually be here twenty hours a week? Or do we have, was that discussed as to whether he physically?
So the position is twenty hours a week pace. He has to be twenty hours a week. As in, all the chiefs know, they're typically here more than twenty hours a week. And he is, he is already committed that he can dedicate whatever time he needs to be here to make sure that he accommodates the position as well.
Okay, and he has good references?
Yes.
I mean, have you worked with him before at all?
I've worked with him within the county aspect. I've worked with all three of the candidates. And so, yes, ma'am, I've worked with all of them before.
Okay, well, and sorry, you have a back injury. I have a guess that you got that on duty and, so sorry.
Not sure if you have it.
Okay, well.
Yes, he's not.
Right, okay, thank you.
No worries.
Hey, any other questions?
I was going to, I believe, twenty seventh, was he going to look to start training?
Yes, sir.
And my last day is June fourteenth. Just let you know, twenty seven years. And then he'll be coming in and training with me as much as possible around my shift and his shift. You know, it'll be a couple of days a week probably until default take over. See you guys are aware.
So your last day is June fourteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
I just took a nearby.
Not for that.
I'm involved with projects. I'm assuming you're going to put up a no trespassing sign.
I have no trespassing signs already. I've had trespasses in the past, so I'm worried I lose them. I'm just kidding, sorry.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Burgundy, would please do a roll call.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Borie?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Ms. Myers?
Aye.
So approved, thank you. And thank you, chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
For being here tonight. You take care of yourself. It's eight o'clock. Do you need a break? Okay, I'm going to do a five minute, maybe seven minute piece of.
So we're going to go ahead and we're convening our regular scheduled meeting. And next on the agenda is the welcome signs at north and south ends of town. Mayor, I'd like to have some PT logs in the June meetings and have all of the supporting documents and private documents. I want this back up. Can I get a motion to table welcome signs until the June meeting?
Yes, I move that as the Department of Publicity manager requests, we table the welcome signs item until the June meeting.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's name? Okay, so moved. Next is our letter of support for Wright Solutions. And we have got Mona.
This is Lori Thompson.
And thank you so much for sitting out there in the audience. I just, it's been a long, down there, it's been a long evening and I apologize for the delay.
First I've heard of that and had a terrible day. I'm Mike Thompson, Executive Director for Wright Solutions. I want to thank you for your time tonight. I want to thank Commissioner Moore and our staff of Lori Williams for getting us on the agenda. And I apologize for not being here earlier. We are asking for a letter of support from the Crescent City Commission for our appropriation request that's in the legislature now. It's a 1.293 million request to restart the Putnam County Flex Road system and run it for years. So that would be either from the door or an interim solution. Ultimately, what needs to happen is the statute that created the Community Transportation Coordinators, which is Chapter 427, went on the books in 70 time. It needs to be made enforceable in rural counties. What has happened is that Medicaid reform removed Medicaid dollars from the system and MedWafer dollars followed that. So in 2010, we had the 25 equivalent of about 1.4 million in Medicaid and MedWafer dollars. And this year, if we see 145,000 of that, we'll be lucky. The synergy between Medicaid, MedWafer, FDOT, and transportation dispatch non-sponsored funding, the synergy and the efficiencies of running those funds under one entity is what created the Putnam County Flex Road system. And that system then was used to serve the general public of Putnam County. So the 1.293 is a first step to, number one, getting the issue in a recognizable form in the legislature. And number two, hopefully be a first step towards getting Chapter 427 back to where it used to be.
I think I read it here that, so it is currently the Senate.
It's in the Senate, it's not announced.
It's not announced.
Yeah, they were there before, billion dollars hard, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I believe we did this. I know we wrote a letter of support. Did we, I know you and Commissioner Pickens at the time, you came to us before. I thought we wrote a letter of support at that time as well. So yes, Commissioner DeVito.
I was just going to say, do we want my motion?
I do.
Okay, so I move that we provide a letter of support for the budget item for the Putnam County Public Transit Flex Road reopening designated as S Act 2563 for $1,293,000 as requested by Mr. Thompson from Wright Solutions.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do you want at the bottom of that from my signature to be the sign?
I'm going with support, like we usually sign.
No, I just want to make sure that if I sign my name, I just want to make sure that everybody's in agreement.
Sure, I do have a comment about this.
Okay.
And we don't have legislative agenda items on the, on our agenda, but we should probably touch base on it. I think we've all received emails from the Reuben Cities and everything that the legislature's past its deadline. They're only coming back to discuss the budget and possibly a few other items. And it's my understanding they're coming back next week. So timed is of the extreme essence on this. And I think as opposed to the stamped letter from Palatka was definitely back in February before the session, this should, to me really, there should be two separate letters. One should be to our Senator, Senator Lee, saying thank you. And please, I think it's, I think it's ended the letter. Ask the Senate to keep their version of the budget. And then to our Representative, Representative House, I mean Representative Stat rather in the House, ask him to please agree to the Senate funding of this issue. In other words, slightly different language for each letter.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Moore, thank you so much for asking this to be placed on the agenda. You were in the right place at the right time. I do want to compliment Ms. Mary and Commissioner. If we want to write a letter, I'm not sure approval, but we write a letter on behalf of the commission thanking both Mary and Pastor Alford. They helped us out tremendously. And she was just a breath of fresh air and Mary just boo boo boo. And so he was, he did an outstanding job helping us when we needed that. So thank you. And we know that, we know what you do for this community and the assets that you own. How many people do that? We thank you for all that you do. Okay, with that, we have no other discussion. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you to Ms. Gloria back there who actually took me to the side because I know that people in her community really need it, so thank you.
Ms. Gloria, thank you for looking out for the community.
Then Commissioner DeVito.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton.
Aye.
Mayor Miners.
Aye. Thanks all for, thank you. And thank you for your time here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, the next item is our Blue Ribbon Committee and the Hort Historic Preservation Board's request for grants regarding the Miller Middle School. This has been a topic of discussion of the BRC committee and the Preservation Board. They've asked this to be brought before you and consider authorizing staff to move forward with, staff are grant-wake writers, to move forward with hiring grants for the Miller Middle School. So I brought that before you so you can have that discussion.
And one of the biggest challenges is that we don't own the property yet. So we would get a letter from the school district authorizing us to apply for grants that we have. And so about that, you know, we can't do anything. Historic preservation grants are due June 1st, so we're being very long on time. And that list of grants that were given from R E G provided is quite expensive, if you're there.
So Mayor, could I follow up on Commissioner Moore's comment?
Yes.
There was, my understanding that we were just looking at a discussion of the Special Categories Grant from the state, the Division of Historic Resources. That was what I understood from the agenda, when it was first put out. And as Commissioner Moore pointed out, the deadline for that is June 1st. The others, we, that list, I don't know that it even shows deadlines. We would have to do more research, but does that look the same way to the rest of y'all? And then, so to me, a significant question is for the Special Categories Grant, it's my understanding that the maximum award is a billion dollars. We have to ask for something in particular. And we just, yesterday, got the report from R E G. So, you know, to me, that's key. And we have to figure out if we wish to ask for money. If you don't get, if you don't ask, you don't receive, I think that's for sure. And then we would have to figure out who's going to write the grant. Yeah. Right, so we got a couple of things. And I don't know, I was hoping that someone from the Blue Ribbon Committee could tell us whether they have a mind or whether R E G has spoken to them about what we possibly could make as a grant request, you know, to fix something. I just looked at the list of things that we'll pay for. And it says acquisition, but I don't know if there's restrictions on that. So anyway, I was hoping someone from the jury could shed some light. If they can, then we'll have to figure it out ourselves. Can I say something?
Yes.
I don't know why we're being asked permission if they can write a grant. We have, we don't own the property. It's really matter to the city, to, I mean, school still owns the property. So, and the BRC, it really shouldn't be working for the city necessarily. They're just a piece of data to help support the reason why we maybe should own the city. So I'm not sure why we've jumped now from, I mean, this has been a year that we've been, you know, doing this BRC committee. And I think that we have to get back to why we were doing it to begin with and understand it really was to have the information in front of us that we could bring back to the city to see if even the city wanted us to own the property. I think you're moving ahead, the BRC committee, just is saying, well, you know, we need this and the city needs to kind of do this for, you know, get property so that we can start doing this. And that's just not the way I think it should work.
Somebody wants to speak from the, yes, sir.
I can kind of answer some of Commissioner Burton's questions, not all.
Time zones.
Right, or concerns. Could I speak to that just briefly? Okay, so we've taken several steps. We've made several decisions about the Miller Middle School property. And what I'm trying to say is there's logic to us applying for a grant. In our strategic plan, we made the decision, it's in our strategic plan, that we should do our best to acquire the property. We also enacted a resolution that said the property should be preserved, that we were in favor of preservation of the property. So I think regardless of who ultimately owns it, and this is something Mr. Red talked to us about a long time ago about Central Avenue, there's only so much available money for grants. And we all know that historic preservation involves a need for funds. So, and Mr. Fernandez from R E G, several months ago, when he spoke, recommended that the city apply for the Division of Historic Resources grant. And what that would do, if there is an identifiable need to make a repair or a preservation-type repair in that property, I think the money would not even be available until next year. But you can only ask for one grant a year, so that would, and I'm assuming that the money would follow the property if we did not ultimately, and we need to get clarification from maybe R E G on that. Essentially, we would be applying for grants for the property to accomplish a preservation need. And I have not had time to read the whole R E G report, which is a lot of this stat.
But what I'm trying to say is, I understand, you know, grants are very important. You may try to give a grant to begin with. And of course, the states have known because, number one, is they own the property. The school owns the property. And so the state still owns the property. So, well, but the school board owns it, not the city. And so therefore, we did not get that grant. So I don't, I don't know if it is or not, if it is a grant.
Because it's not a grant. I'm like, granted, possibly someone from the Historic Society. I'm not the Historic Society, I'm from the BRC.
Right, but Mayor, if I could just finish my clarification. The grant that Commissioner Burton was interested in is a very different type of grant. And that could not be used to, for us, that was only for acquisition. It couldn't be used for us to acquire a property that actually already belonged to another government. Preservation grants are to advance preservation. And I don't think there is the same concern exactly with who owns it. The idea is to create the preservation activity.
Then why don't you ask the school board? They own it.
That was a, that was something that I was wondering, is it, is in talking to the school district, have they, have they agreed to go in and do this as join in on this grant? I would like to ask them, sorry, from the BRC.
But I just want to clarify that it's kind of different.
One of them, she was going through Department of Environment and Protection, this is through the state.
This is about preservation.
Yeah, yeah, Secretary of State House. So we have someone who would like to speak to us from the BRC.
All right, and I think those are, I think Mr. Burton and Commissioner DeVito are both right, in a sense. With the, with the language that we, that was proposed, that would come from the city to the school board, the language says the city would take possession at their own discretion. But it would be a memorandum of understanding that the city would take possession. And at your discretion would be when we cut enough funds in place that you wouldn't be burdened. So that's the plan. And we would have to get with Charlie Douglas and the school board and get that memorandum of understanding in place. And that would make it go a lot smoother. But I think Commissioner DeVito is right, we could do preservation. Simply maybe asking the school board, can we pursue? And that's, that could be a part of the memorandum of understanding. And it won't be hard to get that. All we need to do is get with Charlie Douglas, I'll be happy to be on. I'll be happy to be on that discussion, or it could just simply be the city going to the uh, school board. So, I, I think that's basically where we are. And, and time is of the essence on, on this do. We certainly want to apply for that, for, for the, the larger uh, on this do, if we possibly can, no larger ones coming from the state.
And who would, and who would do, I mean, who would make that application? Would that be Fred Fox, could that be our other? R E, R E G, R E G, could do that, they would do that on our account?
They, they could do it. My question is, um, how, what would be the fee? And we would, I mean, essentially, um, I can't tell from this report what would be appropriate. I don't know what the, I'm assuming there was something, someone even suggested to me, if we didn't apply it to the main building, could we apply for the grant for the auditorium? Um, which is also a contributing structure to the historic district and is very important to the community.
I think though, so my question, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back to this right now. Time is of the essence. I, you're not going, let's be realistic. Um, you're, you're not gonna get an O U between um, the school district and us um, before the June first deadline and also be able to get this grant. Have you spoken to the school district about applying for this grant on their behalf? They, they have the property. If they apply for this grant, it would be to their benefit. Um, and so I, I, I think that.
If they apply for the grant, then they're stuck with the property until the money comes in next year, and then it's a two-year closing out, you know, process for the grant.
I don't know.
But we need to apply for it, then we're stuck with the property. And as soon as that comes into our, as soon as that belongs to us, we, we own everything with, that comes with it, everything. And I don't think that we can afford that. Now, if you really look at, I looked at all these pictures. I looked at what it's gonna take to bring this building back.
In your memorandum of understanding, it, it said, and I think this is what it says now, that we proposed, you don't take possession until you decide to take possession. In the meantime, the city, not the city, the district is maintaining the property.
I agree with that.
That's, that's what, that's what the, that's what the memorandum of understanding would say.
Okay, has anybody spoken to um, Division of Historical Resources to find out as far as those parameters and the situation that we're in for some guidance from them? That would be, I mean, that would be the first thing I would do, is call them up and say, this is the situation we're in and how valuable this is to the community, to the school district. Um, how would we go about proceeding and still being able to qualify? And, and so we're trying to, we're trying to figure this out. And, and I think the, the easiest thing is to call them and say, this is, and, and they're very, very helpful. And this is what they do, this is what they want to do. Um, um, to call them, yes, Commissioner Roy?
It was something that Paul Weaver, the person that's doing our historical survey, who's done many of these grants, and Rick from R E G mentioned to us that all it takes is basically a permission, you know, a sign something from the school district, the rest are fine that we have. So, it is something that they do all the time. So it's not, it's not difficult to do. In fact, they said it's really, you know, people.
So we don't know, but we don't know how much R E G is gonna charge us. If they were to, if they were to be the ones to write the grant, submit the grant on our behalf. So we don't have that detail. We don't know necessarily if Division of Historical Resources will accept it um, or even consider it if we don't have ownership, we only have an O U. And it's our, our discretion as far as taking possession.
And how much is the grant worth?
Up to a million, is your question?
Up, up to a million, and I'm assuming that up to a million could provide something, a great benefit to one or the other. And Mayor, I really like the way you said it. The whole purpose is to do it for the community for years to come. Because it's, you know, preservation projects take time. Is my guess that both R E G and Paul Weaver can answer that question that you so succinctly asked. Your sixty-four dollar question to us is, um, who, you know, we need someone to do this for us, and what would cost? How would we do it? I think they can, I think they can tell us how to do it.
And, exactly, and that's something that, that I, I again say that if it comes down to the school district doing it, um, preserving the cafeteria, preserving the auditorium, preserving the gymnasium, something to that effect. Um, you know, a million dollars can go a long ways to those individual buildings. So the main building, it's gonna require, we all know it's gonna require a lot of that. So I just think that in discussion with the school district, and if that means that Charlie Douglas needs to be part of it, um, Mr. Holmes?
I have advised, I have recommended, uh, unterming the school district to represent them in those negotiations I have, this man. I'll also mention that in my experience with grants, uh, some grants actually are taken on by the grant writer on the basis that they will administer the grant, even if it's awarded, for fees that the grant includes to be paid to the administrator. A lot of times those grant writers won't do it unless they think there's a high probability of the grant being awarded. That may give you an indication of whether or not that, thanks to grants, gonna be awarded when you talk to your folks about the fee for grant writing. But it, in my experience, the grant writing fee can be significant. So I think you're wise to ask about the fee of, of the grant writers regardless. For any grant, not this grant.
And also for that, we have to put out an R A Q. But the law on as grant writers, the law on is, they have, they have different, we contracted them for a different sort of. Do we do an R F T or R A Q?
Do you have a continuing contract with them?
No. Sure, we did R E G. No. We'd have to look into that, just make sure that we're with them, that we meet those parameters. So they're not good, you know, they don't do themselves in trouble. So Commissioner, um, how, how do we need to proceed here? How do you want to proceed?
Well, I have a question for our internal city manager, if I can. Um, and that, two questions here. One is, I thought someone from the city attended um, the Historic Resources, whatever the webinar they have for the required webinar. Was that you? And also, do you have a recommendation for us as to how we should go about this? If you don't, fine, but if you do, um, I would love to hear.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I don't have any input on that. As far as um, the webinar with the Historical Resources, I have not sat in on that. I do work very, I'm working very closely with the representative um, from that department on another, our, our historical survey grant. So I do have that on my to-do list and the link in my email box to watch. But I have.
So you did, you did go to the webinar and, um, because I don't even know what it was. It might have occurred before you came into this job. Um, so that's fine. Um, all right, just wanted to check with you. Because you, sometimes, you know, when you do have a recommendation, you feel very good. I was hoping you were gonna pull a rap on that.
It does say.
I gotta say, we can listen.
It does say in the grant guidelines that have ownership on the property for some reason is requested, or have the written concurrence of the property owner. So the written concurrence of the property owner is all it says. As I describe, just your permission.
So, because Mayor, to me, um, we need, to me, we need someone to be designated to at least inquire of, of Paul Weaver and R E G. Um, could they help us at this date? And if so, for what cost? Um, and as well, we would need to have someone contact the school board. I'm assuming Mr. Bolden might be the right person for a little bit. Um, and to ask, you know, are they willing to participate in this to the extent of giving us a letter allowing us to apply for the grant?
I think, um, we went through most of what we got from R E M, or, um, R, excuse me.
R E G.
R E M did, if that's what you're saying, did that a lot.
You're showing your age.
I know, I know. Sorry about that.
She did.
She did think that it was. I, you know, what I didn't see in, in the whole thing that they did was at the end say, okay, th, th, these are all the things that are wrong with the building. These are all the good things that are good to the building. But I didn't see a thing that they kind of did with the Blue Moon Lodge that said, okay, if, if we come in and this is what it would take to fix this building or bring these buildings back to a, a, a basic state, okay, that, that you could actually use these buildings.
That's what I was hoping, that's, I was.
Okay, and that's what I was hoping to see. And so that we have an idea.
Yeah, we, we assume that's gonna come pretty soon, huh?
Yes, that's right.
I mean, because I think that, that really, that's a, that's significant. Yeah, I mean, without that, you know, uh, you know, if I go and get a, a guy to do my electrical work in my house right now, I, my house is not very big. It's gonna cost about eight to ten grand to get all the wiring, basically.
Exactly how much it costs.
Oh, okay. Well, just saying, you know, it's, it's, it's expensive.
Yeah.
You know, and, um, you know, the air conditioning, they work. I, I, I went through it pretty good, I was surprised, I actually got pretty interested in it. And, um, you know, there, there's a lot of work that has to be done in there. And I'm not saying that it can't be done, but those, that's the, that's the number one question, I think, for the city right now. Is it feasible for us to, to move forward, okay, with the cost of what it may be? And that's still a big question mark, okay, what is the cost of it all?
We thought we'd have that by the end of April, but it didn't happen.
I, I understand, I, I'm not, I'm not housing.
So we still don't know, I guess what Commissioner Burton is, and I, I have to agree, I look, that's, that's, that's what I look, that's the first thing I look for also. In hoping that it was here, because then it at least gives us an understanding of what we're, what we're gonna have to chew on.
Yes.
The commission remembers. Their, their report is finished the end of May. So they're still, we're still waiting, I assume, for that detail.
Yeah, that's correct. And this is just a draft document. Um, in my city manager report, I referenced that it's a structural assessment draft, a quarter review. So we got it yesterday and.
Not the final. Yeah, we just made sure we added our information for tonight. So thank you, thank you very much for getting this out to us.
And, and you know, I know I sound like I'm anti-school, I'm really not. But one thing I've always said when we began this back in June of twenty twenty four, by the way, we're coming to our birthday, one year birthday. Um, is that the, the commission isn't gonna decide whether we keep the school, whether we spend money on school. It has to be brought to a referendum, to the city, the taxpayers. Because this, I think, is gonna cost us a lot of money.
With the detail. And the analysis will be, will all be able to make a judgment on how to move forward.
Yes.
So that's what, that's what we're waiting for.
Okay.
And we should be able to get this funded. It's not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna take several years to get this funded.
And it's gonna take several years to build it back.
Yes.
It really is.
In the meantime, in the meantime, the, the district will have to support it. I mean, I think they know that. They'd like to give it to us today, and, but that doesn't make any sense to the city. And they know that. They, they have said, we're not gonna do anything that's gonna harm the city. This is a partnership. It is truly a partnership between the city and the district. They want this to happen. They want the city to have it. And they've told us that over and over.
So, you know, we're already.
We can make this work.
We, we already, we have a big bond for schools, bigger earned schools and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, unless, unless we get support through, not just through the city, but through a foundation, through people, through private enterprises somewhere, you know, it, it's, I don't think it's gonna happen, you know?
We, we've all agreed in the beginning. But economically, it has to, it has to be feasible.
Yes.
And, and the B R C is still committed to that.
Okay.
So we've worked, as you know, very hard with the commission to bring you data.
Yes.
And analysis and recommendations. But we sit here today, waiting further for your direction. Which we're happy to do, but we're, but as, as you know, we're not going to act without your guidance and direction.
Commissioner DeVito. Okay, so what I am looking at here is the agenda. And the agenda says, um, this is what directed my thought process before we came into the meeting. Um, the agenda said, Blue Ribbon Commission and Historic Preservation Board is actually requesting grants for middle, middle and middle school. And it was my understanding that it was the Historic Preservation Grant for Special Categories, the large one, due at the beginning of June. Um, to, I am particularly focused on Mr. Fernandez from R E G. And I'm very sorry, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, sorry. Um, I think there was somebody else with that name, this is also our thing. Um, I'm sorry that it did not occur to me to follow up on this. He suggested we apply for a grant. The man knows what he's doing. Um, right, he's on the commission. And I think the question should have been to him, and still can be to him, what is it that we should apply for grant for? Okay, because I, to me, if he thinks that we should be trying to bring up to a million dollars into this community or something on that fifteen acre site, I would like to know what it is and what would be the ballpark cost for someone to do that for us? Is that something that either the B R C or our internal city manager could do, like within the next, um, five business days?
Well, I think first off, you're gonna, I believe, right, that with him, with Mr. Gonzalez, you're gonna have to find out if he is even able to do this. What was, what did he have in mind? What did he have in mind? Somebody has to reach out to him, so you need to give some direction, Commissioner. We need, we need some direction here.
And I just wanted to, um, answer one of Commissioner Burton's concerns. Remember, as the B R C and as the commission, we never envisioned this project as being just the city paying for it all. This was going to be partnerships, like you said, between private individuals, private organizations, the county, the, I mean, the school district. But we have to start somewhere. And someone needs to take the lead and someone needs to put the step, the foot out there and get started. And that's basically what they're asking for, is to get started. And like, being able to do this first grant and get some money coming in. Because as Mr. Gonzalez, the other gentleman is, Mr. Gonzalez said, when he was here at the B R C meeting, we should be applying this year and next year and next year and next year. It's like, this is the kind of projects that they fund. This is the kind of projects that are popular for, and this is the projects that are happening all over. And this is the kind of project that would be beneficial to this entire community, especially to the city. So it makes sense for the city to be the one of the driver's seat. But by no means are we gonna be holding the entire purse strings. Um, but we have to get started somehow. And that's why the B R C is here to get this started, at least, like, hopefully, a company gets a grant. I mean, applying for a grant is not guaranteed. Um, we don't even know if the grant will exist next year. But we can start somewhere. Um, but we can't just sit here and not do something because we're afraid it's not gonna happen.
So, I guess, I need to mention, right. I have to move that we, I'm trying to start our internal city manager to contact, um, Mr. Gonzalez with R E G and inquire two things. One, does he have a recommendation in mind, like, what we should physically be applying for this year from the special categories grant? Um, and if he has a recommendation about that, um, could his firm assist us and what would it cost? And report that back to us as soon as there is an answer.
I'll second that.
Because, and we're just, even if we don't act on it, I would like to know what we should have done and could have done.
So we're not acting on the grant right now, but we are asking. So what you're asking is him to come back to us with recommendations. Okay, very game of cards. And cost.
Right, what, what would it cost?
And very quickly, with the understanding that we're gonna have to call special meeting when we get that.
Exactly.
Discuss this.
Right, okay.
So we're, do we have a motion in a second? Do we have any discussion? Do we have any, any public input on this? Has anybody been here waiting to hear this?
Should, uh. Yeah, Mayor. Should we also request it, Mr. Weaver?
Um, that's, do you want to add Mr. Weaver to you, or do you want to amend your motion? Um, yes, I would like to amend my motion, um, for our interim city manager, uh, or someone who she might designate to also contact Mr. Weaver.
A second, again.
Okay, so you're gonna, okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Burton?
I'm.
Commissioner Moore?
I'm.
Commissioner Moore?
I'm.
Commissioner De Vito?
I'm.
I'm.
Madam Mayor.
So direct, again.
Uh, again, the B R C stands ready. If we can assist in any way, uh, please just let me know.
Please do, but I know Christine will be in contact with you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you guys for your, for your assistance.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to our workshops.
Yes, ma'am. You'll see, the first two items, those workshops have already been, um, set. And the remaining workshop topics are, um, topics that you previously approved. And those workshops need to be set, so.
Okay, so we got nine o'clock on the nineteenth.
These workshops.
Um, and then we have nine thirty.
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes, ma'am. If I would ask that, uh, the commissioners provide the clerk with additional dates for June. I, I do have Commissioner Moore's. Um, did I not send some?
I sent you some, but those might be, yes, may I not be in line?
Commissioner De Vito, I have you through June sixteenth.
I'm through June sixteenth, okay. And, um, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
The, there was a workshop. Um, the one at the bottom says B S and A.
That's the software for finance department.
Oh, okay.
Ready?
Could we piggyback the B S and A on the golf cart since we're here already on the nineteenth? Is, is that, Steve, could you do that? Um, could we be here for that morning?
May nineteenth?
Or four, no?
I'm sorry.
On May nineteenth and the next one.
I don't know.
After six, ten o'clock?
Isn't it, well, off guard.
Off guard is probably gonna take, it's probably gonna be ten thirty. Let's give it to ten thirty. And, or just immediately following, if we do immediately following.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, I can.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I thought we were having workshops sooner, um, whereas than I have to be in the land at one o'clock on the nineteenth, I believe that's on my day.
Okay.
Um, do you think we're, do you think we can?
Uh, should be ordered by the new. Yeah, perhaps, I would hope so. Steve, it wouldn't take more than an hour, would it?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Have you out here eleven thirty?
Okay. Um, and then, I, I don't know, do we want to, um, prioritize? Um, you know, equipment order, which we would like to see happen first?
Well, we know we've got the fire station. Um, I think that's gonna depend, that's probably gonna depend right now on the chief. Correct. Yes, ma'am, I got that. Yes, ma'am. So, well, his, whenever he's feels that he's able to do that, um, he's.
Yeah, workshop project timeline. First.
Um, that, that, and quite honestly, that and the gas department are, um, a priority. Um, what does everybody look like on the twenty second of May? Come on. Is anybody open on the twenty second of May?
In the morning. In the morning, available in the morning.
First available in the morning? Okay, so could we do the, um, could we do both the, the budget timeline and the natural gas department that morning? What time? Starting at nine o'clock?
Um, I have the director checking with Katie on natural gas. We're working on schedules, but she's super busy right now.
Um, the, the only thing I would mention is, um, the tree and garden board meets that afternoon on Thursday, the twenty second.
Yes.
I forget, okay, just.
At one o'clock or one or two o'clock, I have to check.
Okay.
We should be done by then. Should we start at nine o'clock in the morning? I just remember. We would definitely be done by then.
Okay, and what is that, that we're putting on that?
Well, we're looking at natural gas and budget, budget in timeline. Um.
Okay.
So.
I'm twenty.
Steve, will you be ready for that on the, on the twenty second of May?
What's the budget?
The budget and timeline for year twenty twenty five, twenty six.
What are you talking about?
And that's just to go over kind of the timeline. The schedule. Yeah. Okay.
The process.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
To, is there time that morning? Um, one of the items we have on here, I think, is to review the, um, outcomes of the twenty twenty three fiscal year audit and anything that we should be brought up to date on. Um, would Steve, would Steve be ready to do that, just to, um?
I don't believe the audit will be completed at that time. It's, it's usually not until, wait, you're talking about the twenty three, oh, twenty three, twenty four audit? That he's currently working on.
Okay.
Not the one that we previously had.
Um, I was talking, actually, I think I'm the one who brought this up.
Yeah.
What I was talking about was something, um, that the auditors said that we should be aware of, and you talked about this, that we should be aware of what, um, we are working on in finance department to go forward so that we wouldn't have deficiencies, any policies and procedures that are changing. That kind of thing. Just to get an update on where we were and.
Will you be ready for that?
What's important for us to know?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Chris, for that.
So the budgets and timeline for the year of twenty twenty five, twenty six, can we just give you that on May twenty second?
I'm gonna say that, can we not? That should be an easy one. Let's go ahead. Can we put that on the nineteenth? Let's wrap that up.
On the nineteenth?
Oh, you have to leave on nineteenth.
Yeah.
That shouldn't take though, but how long should that take? Which one, yeah. Uh, this with the B S and A, because this is just a workshop, this is just a workshop. So they're gonna do, are they gonna do a presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, could we limit them to maybe forty minutes? Okay, so we limit them to forty minutes and then we do the timeline immediately following so that we can still get Commissioner De Vito out of here. Um, by, no, later than eleven forty five.
Okay, and so what are we doing then, um, Thursday, March twenty second?
Nothing.
But we're not meeting then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not unless, not unless, um.
We're not natural gas?
Not unless you can get natural gas or for some reason the fire station, if he's ready for that, I don't know if he would like it. And you don't think natural gas will be ready either? Okay, so no, nothing. You're clear on the twenty second. Go ahead and make plans.
I don't have. Okay.
Um, okay, so is everyone in agreement with that? Right now?
Should we turn to B S and A?
Yes, B S and A is on the nineteenth. Immediately following the, um, I mean, uh, yeah, immediately following the golf cart and budget and timeline is immediately following the B S and A.
And, um, Mayor, before we leave this, um, workshop topic, um, didn't we not say that we do have a workshop on the general animal subject? Whether they were, um, domestic or wild? Wasn't that one of our topics to be done somewhere?
Um, just the whole animal control issue is part of it.
Right, because there was animal control and then it was.
Domestic or wild.
Right.
Yes. We can add that in, um, animal control. That whole, that whole topic's gonna take longer than.
Right.
That's gonna take, that's gonna take a while.
Right, I just don't want us to forget.
I don't think any of us are forgetting that.
But I could.
We wanted that on Tuesday morning.
If we could just keep that on the list.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, everybody's good with that. Let's go on to the city manager's report if we can. Um, is there anything, Christina Marie, that you need to bring to our attention on your city manager's report?
Um, tell me, I think I've educated everything that's, um, going on recent, um, in the report. If you have any questions, I don't, I may be off topic.
Okay, Commissioner Moore, you have a question?
Striking project? How's that? I know, last time I asked about re-doing it, what's going on with that?
Right now, we have a pending farming project. Um, so, um, over on this side of town, that would kind of be on Rioa as well. Our public works director, um, wanted to wait for the striking to happen to maybe, um, let it coincide with that work, so we're not doing striking and then re-striking, but.
Have we got, go ahead, get to the south main?
Um, yeah. Um, not yet, on that topic, um, she's sent a letter to the state a couple of days ago. Well, sure, that would be, this was regarding this, that, um, project.
I mean, that's not right now, it hasn't, it's not, not anymore. I mean, we, we, the striking project already is making, we see people go over to speed tables. Played too fast. I mean, there were stripes there years ago, they just handed away. And we were, we dropped this a while ago, and then we were told, well, wait, until we repave after the farming project, it's about to be repaved. Like, I just.
Yes, they're good.
And if they, you know, I haven't started this yet, I still don't know.
Be that. Do, until it's happened.
Uh, the letter that's being passed out is just an update on the C V D G grant and where we are in the timeline. So as you can tell, that is underway. And as far as the striking, um, the commission approved it at the end of autumn of last year. And, um, it went out for the, you approved it, it's a company. That company's bid was no longer valid. It was significantly low. Ultimately, I do believe we will have to bring it back, um, put it out for bid again.
Oh, yeah.
Not as yet, no.
I just, I think that we're, you know, really, this is something that needs, for just for safety. Someone's gonna hit one of those speed tables and tear the bottom of the car off. Um, and then, you know, goodbye.
It's never had, I don't think it's ever had striking on the law since May.
Yeah, a lot of them, yeah, I can tell you, I'm sure you've been.
It has, right, you know.
They all have striking. It was poorly done.
Maybe a lot of it, okay.
It was not right, it was not right.
Okay, so.
I just think, I.
If you would, regardless of what happens with the C V. C V G. Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. Um, what's, I think is, that's the feeling from the commission is that we need to move forward and get that striking. They did, they did a great job over at the, um, former middle school when they did the repaving there and the parking lot, you know, which might have been ever, been a slow sign.
There were some of those yellow tactile pads that are on the, um, the curbs. I don't know. I, I think, time was to run, that was for not, um, for non-sid, it was for people who were blind.
Blind, yes.
Who didn't do that. But there was, when we did the tour last, two weeks ago, there was several missing that, I think that prospect street. And then there was one I found, happily, that block, didn't get that fixed or.
Yes, yes, I've met with F D O T and I have another meeting with their maintenance department. And that meeting is on, I believe, the twentieth or the twenty first. And their team will be meeting me here, will be blocking off town. That's kind of the subject matters as well as our bricks, um, crossing the highway. We asked about hearing listing and, um, and multiple other issues with D O T still.
Yeah, the slide was too.
And working with the, um, also one of the medians, if there's something difficult, we should be able to do with medians for, for lower maintenance. Um, and, uh, we have a sign that we're still waiting on.
It's really something, or something.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's, uh, the other thing, there's, there's lights that have to be repaved, you have to be able to put in, converting all the way up to the. City limits, last time it was out, but I haven't done it more.
There are twelve of them that are out right now, and I have sent that request in, uh, I contacted Carol. And we've sent that request into.
Because I'm not liable, they don't have, they're not liable for the other streetlights.
Right, I, 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 I've gone online and posted the, the complaint.
Okay, because I don't sell.
And I've also spoken to Carol about it, so she's aware at, at F P L. But there are twelve of them. Okay, well, anything else you did? Thank, yes, I mentioned.
Yeah, okay, so, um, was passed out to us and the reward that I needed, um, a letter about the status of the C V G grant, five three D B dash N thirteen. Um, and the status of it, it's not thirteen, what the C V G grant is for?
It's for the North Main Street water project. Flat project and, uh, assuming it's a lift station on three way as well. Comes down.
Okay, and some, by my. That's one of the more important ones that really kind of need to be done. Uh, we're talking with, but, you know, it's very important to get that one done, you know, three.
Really, yeah, we've kind of got awarded the grant at the same time as prospect and south main, it just went through a little process a lot longer.
Okay, it was for south main and, oh, no, I'm talking about the ones that are completed.
Yeah.
Um, there was actually a contract brought to the city that we signed. And there were, um, specifications in that contract for the protection of the heritage trees. Um, and I talked to Mr. Redd or either Mr. Grohlart, I forget, I talked to one of them about this, or the status of the contract for the North Main, um, project, because that also has to buy the number of heritage trees. And they said that the time had not come yet to sign that contract. I don't, where does that process fall in this timeline?
So it's.
August of twenty twenty five, award contractor, submit contractor procurement package, should go to Congress for, for.
Okay, but is that contract hopefully that we will sign?
Yes, yeah, that, um, award the contractor, submit. We're gonna advertise for construction bids in July of twenty twenty five. And then we will have that probably at the August meeting and then we'll have to make that back to the base. I mean, and award that contractor in the next.
All right.
Right, so then it would be the advertising for construction bids. It would be my understanding that that would be the time to make sure that we include, because we had a entire workshop with Midtown, to make sure that we include the same, um, addenda and provisions for protection of those heritage.
And we just started, you know, when we talked about it, that was, that was part of it, because they even moved, they redid the plans for the more, I mean, we did all of that, yeah, so it should, it should be the exact same.
Okay.
Because coming from our engineer to go, I mean, that wants to do the construction to hack in, so.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that that does not get lost in the shop. Because I think we have some of the largest trees in town in the country.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I do appreciate it. And just, would you like to expect copies back?
Also with this, this is important to our, um, to our fire station as well for the ambulance, um, because of the water issue and being able to get the, the water. So it's gonna be more beneficial to us and cost effective if this goes in place before we go forward with that.
We're all hoping that the timing works out, that the, the new station can tie into the seawater project.
Um, I, I am very encouraged because, um, and I know I've, I've placed several phone calls and haven't gotten anything back. I think they're all taking a break right now. As we know, after session, everybody has to decompress. So it's hard to get much information out of anybody immediately following. Um, is your understanding that coming back next week? I thought they were coming back, um.
Hopefully later. Never really discussed it yet.
Yeah, so I was told.
They're sorry, Mr. T D Spector.
June second.
Yeah, that's, they extended it to June second.
The encouraging part, uh, is that they've reached out to us again, um, regarding the fire station. Not our water manning lines, but, but the fire station. They've asked for additional information, just like they did last year, and Christina Marie and the chief have taken care of getting the information[1791.14] They've asked for additional information, just like they did last year, and Christina Marie and the chief have taken care of getting the confirmation to them. So that's encouraging, last year, um, they started that conversation, the first year, they did, first year we applied, they were, we didn't hear anything from. So hopefully that means that they had told us last year that if we give you a million this year, can you come back next year, which we did.
Right, and I, I cannot figure it out, but I, as to which version of the budget it's in, but the fire station, you know, it's got a good conference. So my suggestion was gonna be, at some point on this agenda, um, that we talk about saying something about, cause we have a historic preparation grant to, um, to report that, and do we need to actually write a letter of support to the appropriate House or Senate for the fire station, I don't know.
I've never heard, I want Senator Lee to try, like, to hear that, we appreciate him getting a, or getting a Senate budget. Cause I have a feeling it's fine, the Senate side, not House side. Senate is called about a hundred dollars more than the House. And the House won't.
Um, I, I do. I do want to also bring something up, that, um, and I, I don't know how, I don't know how we go forward with this, but in your, in reports. Christina, um, I know that the magistrate, they have a meeting this upcoming week, we've got chestnuts become an issue again. So, um, if Pam, we've let it get out of hand, we worked on abating that property, cleaning that property up, and, um, it's, it's almost right back, or it's headed right back where it was before, it's, uh, it's, uh, living right there in those conditions. Um, the neighbors, it's not fair to the neighbors, and we've worked on that, so with Pam, um, rather than reacting, I, I do believe she should be more, um, aware of what's going on before it gets past that point. So, I just, in talking, in talking to her, um, cause now we're in a situation where we're right back on this where we were, and, um, it's, it's just, it's just a bad situation over there, so. You would talk to Pam about that and making sure that before these properties get to that point, let's be proactive and not reactive. Um, okay, we have anything else on that, if not, are they going to, um, Mr. Holmes, you have.
So it's, um, under my item at least, but the, um, as I think all of you are aware by this time, I was made aware of and provided copy of a complaint by an employee, uh, against the commissioner. Let me first state that the purpose of this discussion right now is not to conduct a trial or hearing or fact finding sessions tonight. Instead, the purpose is for me to advise you have options that you have. As you know, you can't talk to each other, except in this context. Since the complaint is against a commissioner, there really is no one who is designated in, uh, in your policies, procedures, or ordinances to investigate or to take action regarding the complaint, which leaves you as the authority who would be, uh, responsible for that. So, the complaint alleges, uh, behavior that, um, could be characterized as setting or situation that, that could be termed a hostile work environment. Um, I think that, uh, your options are many, but one of the options that you don't have is to ignore the complaint. So from that perspective, and let me reiterate, I think I did an email to all of you, I've not investigated the complaint. Nothing I say is intended to comment on the merits of the complaint, I've done, I've not talked to anyone, uh, firsthand directly that was, uh, either the complainant or a witness, so, and I don't, and I don't intend to investigate it, I think that my role as attorney for the commission would make it inappropriate for me to be involved in any investigation of the complaint against the commissioner. But I think that the complaint has to be looked into, unless you're gonna determine that you have some reason to believe that the complaint was made in good faith. I don't have it, I have no knowledge of that. If you do, then that would, that would be, I suppose, a reason for not moving forward with an investigation, but unless someone has that information, uh, then I think that you're gonna have to move forward in some format to investigate the complaint. And I think that probably that would involve you, uh, uh, I believe, reaching out to League of Cities or the attorney that's represented the city in the past in litigation, uh, involving, um, liability issues for a recommendation as to somebody who might investigate the complaint. I don't think the investigation, uh, make it very clear, I don't think any of us should direct the course of the investigation, but based upon my understanding of the nature of the complaint, I don't think you're talking about a really extensive investigation, it'd probably involve interviews of the people involved, and if there were any witnesses that, that, uh, that could add or shed light to the, to the, uh, situation, then obviously the investigator will want to talk to them, but again, I would not wanna be in any way involved in directing it, I don't think you should be. Bring the investigator in, go to the complaint, or he or she the complaint, and let that go whichever direction they think that didn't go. At some point, I think a report comes back to you, um, and that report then would be for you to consider. Uh, and then at that point, for you to make a decision as to what is anything to do. And your options go from, you know, pretty much, uh, a discussion to a recommend, to a censure, to a recommendation, to revert further complaint to Division of Ethics, you don't have the power to remove the commissioner, I think you all know that. Only the, the governor would be in a position to do that, and that would be, that would be only if there were probably circumstances that the Department of Ethics or Division of Ethics found to warrant that. So, in essence, and in sum, I'm not asking for, looking for, or recommending there be some kind of a hearing, but not, uh, at all. I am recommending that, again, unless you, someone has reason to believe that it was made in bad faith, I do not have that knowledge. But unless someone is gonna take that stance, then I think there needs to be an investigation, and I think that investigation needs to be done by, by a third party. And then you go from there.
Okay. Go ahead, I was just gonna say.
I, I just, believe me, I've been thinking about this all week. And, um, I don't know about League of Cities or how they would actually get involved with an investigation, I don't know if they really have a, a, uh, a group of people that actually invest things like this.
I wouldn't suggest that they do it, I would, my point was, they might suggest someone to you who knows of, or other, in similar circumstances, right? And or, like I said, your attorney, the attorney who's represented you in, 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 uh, liability matters, might be the same. I would not wanna make the recommendation either, I would not buy firm involved, and, and, and I think the reason for that is obvious.
And, and of course, the commission really can't make, um, we, we can't do anything, but we, we're not judges here, we're just commissioners, and, um, but, but there is, uh, a place to put ethics complaints, and that's actually the State Commission on Ethics. You know, I don't know how else to, to do it, but.
Well, I think there's a procedure, um, when you, when you look this up, there is, if you've got it in the Florida, I mean, not in Florida, if you get it in Florida with the cities, but, there is a, there is a procedure, and the first one is you acknowledge, and then you send them on for an investigation. Okay, and so, like Dawn said, I think we would have to refer it now. Dawn, I do know that the Florida League of Cities, anytime I have tried to talk to them, um, on legal issues, they will absolutely not talk to us. Um, they would only wanna talk to the attorney, so I guess, who would be, would you be the one to, to speak to them for their, or send it one to them?
I mean, I could be a cop to it, we got cops, as I've indicated, I, I have no information about the merits of the complaint. I have intentionally not talked to anybody about the complaint, other than to read it. So sure, I don't mind doing that, but I, I don't know that I was looking, that I was recommending that they become involved as an investigatory agency, I'm not sure they would. I was simply, much like you saw assistants that decided who might assist you in the city manager search. They might have a pool of, you know, folks who they said are, are in our area, do you do it, uh, efficiently and, and hopefully relatively expensively? So that you have a third party, a set of third party eyes on it.
That probably still would come out of their legal office, and I just know that, all the experiences I've had with them, they will not talk to you unless, unless you're the attorney. So, that would be, so that's where we would have to start, that's where we, that's where we would start.
So you're, so you're not going to League of Cities now, to make it a city?
No, no, that's not what we're saying, that's not, that's not what he said at all, he said, we would have to have an independent investigation.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And so that's where we would go, is, cause he can't do the investigation, we can't do the investigation. So it would be somebody in the first, you know, that's who we'd go to always for, um, for legal advice outside of Dawn, is the League of Cities. And so they hopefully could recommend somebody who could do this in, this internal investigation, um, and be objective and not subjective. And that's what we, that's.
And generate a report, and then.
In fairness to everyone, that's what you would have to have, is an objective, um, um, investigator.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, you get it.
And then they'll bring their recommendation, they would bring their recommendations back to us.
Or at least they bring back their findings and facts.
Their findings, they would bring back their findings, and at that point in time, then we could, we the commission could, could determine, um, a course of action.
And of course, the, the complainant has the right to go directly to the Division of Ethics in terms of an ethics complaint. But I don't think you can defer, since the complaint was made to you, I don't think you can advocate and say that that's, the complaint is the only option. So I'm not saying that, I, I wanna make clear that I'm not saying that you are in any way limiting the complainant's avenues of, of redress. I'm just saying, that sentence that it made to you, I think you have an obligation to act on it, and, and independent of that, that complaint, if you make your own complaint to Division of Ethics, if they wish.
Okay, independent of this, fine.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I need to.
Well, are you with that, we, Mr. Holmes, um, contacts League of Cities to find a investigator? Or to give their suggestion or advice on an investigator who investigates and brings it back.
Go on a second. Uh, well, I'm, well, I'm gonna need a second, I mean, so this is an acknowledgement, so, um, Dawn? I'll be out here because I don't wanna say anything outside of what I could, but you said already that we either acknowledged that.
If someone's got a different option, then I guess they can put it on the table, but, but as, in my opinion, the option that doesn't exist is to ignore or do nothing.
So we have a proper motion?
Well, no, we don't, you just seconded.
I, I do have a proper motion. She could, if she.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you did, I didn't know if you did. Okay, I'm, I'll go here and say.
Okay, then, my motion is second.
What version?
Do we, do we have, um, do we have any discussion, any further discussion?
Well, actually, I have a question, okay. Um, I'm the person who's the subject of the complaint, um, it's been published in the newspaper. And, um, in his email to us, Mr. Holmes said he would recommend, um, that we do, and the city have an investigation that would afford due process. So as the subject of the complaint, I am very interested in being afforded due process. Because when you're an elected official, and this could happen to any of us on any particular topic, um, you don't get the same kind of due process as if you're an employee. If you look at our procedures, our policies and procedures for the city as a whole, um, if there's a harassment complaint against, and Mr. Holmes described this, I believe, as harassment, I think that was in.
I don't think so.
Or hostile work environments, whatever, hostile work environment, that was in. Um, then there is a process for investigation, and it was timed to talk to both sides. When you're a commissioner, it becomes public record, so a certain, I'm sorry, can I just please finish?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, obviously, um, if you're the person complained against, you have an interest in having due process, which Mr. Holmes is recommending, a recommendation, and this topic hasn't come up, but am I allowed to vote on the motion as to what to do? You and I talked this morning, and we didn't.
You did, you didn't ask.
Thank you, and I was going to ask that, but you took a vote, just to make sure, because you otherwise, if you're, if you're allowed to accuse yourself or not, so.
Well, I mean, obviously, you have an interest in the outcome of the vote. So the interest, some people define the interest as being purely economic. I think I go a little bit beyond that from my perspective, if, if a person has what appears to be a conflict in the outcome of a vote, and that conflict, uh, is, is very apparent, then I think there's, there's a, in my opinion, it would be most appropriate to abstain from voting.
Okay, so that means, if it's, do I fill out the, um, ethics conflict form?
You can certainly fill out the ethics conflict form.
Either, cause if I'm supposed to vote and I don't vote, then that's an ethics violation.
Well, I, I don't accept that. Uh, what I, I, you are, I just gave my legal advice, you don't have to follow it, you can do whatever you choose, but I gave my legal advice. As I've said before, I don't direct anybody as to what they do, I provide my advice, and then you go as you see fit. Also, I didn't say that the investigation will provide due process in our conversation, and in my email, I said that I didn't think there was a specific process established in your ordinances or codes that described how to move forward with a, uh, the processing of a complaint of this type. So I thought the general guidelines of due process should control, I still think that.
That was it, yes.
Yeah, exactly, and that's exactly what it said, and I still think that. And in my opinion, due process involves first, an investigation allows, I didn't say the investigation, only take the information from the complainant. Investigation will take information from all sides, and then the information be brought back, and there be multiple levels of, I guess, opportunity to discuss and, and, and find, so, um, yeah, yeah, I'll sleep with that.
I just have one question. Now, the League of Cities, if we do this with the League of Cities, and it, does it become, see, I know just to, um, is it part of the sunshine law, does, I mean, will it, will it be, whatever they, whatever they're doing, is it out in the open? Whereas I know, like, with, uh, the, um, Ethics Commission, they, if they take it, it's closed until they're finished.
The results of the investigation would be public record? There may no requirement that the investigator speak to people in a public setting, no.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, because, you know, uh, we, we, what's going on is always out there, you know, every, every.
People think so, if I really hear.
Well, I think we the commission, we the commission, um, you know.
I'm, I'm just questioning that.
Right, un, un, unfortunately, it was in the paper, um, to both, to both of you, I apologize. Um, I knew they did a public records request, and I did ask the paper, I did ask them, please not to, I, I did, I'll admit it, you know, just, can you, can you just wait? And, it's, it's the paper's paper. Um, I apologize, you both had to go through that, goodness knows, I've gone through it, and I know several of us have gone through it. And so we know how that, what that's like, um, and it's no fun for, for anybody. But I do believe that, you know, with the due process, but we as commissioners, we also, um, need to, just as we would anything in confidential here. Hold it close, please, everyone hold it close, but I'm sure that an investigator, I would only hope, and I think if they came back to us with a recommendation, that would be the one thing, is to make sure that, that both you and the complainant had an opportunity to share your side.
And I don't know, again, I'll reiterate, I don't know that you're looking for in a recommendation of an investigator. a recommendation of an investigator.
But just, but just in their, in their findings.
You're looking for findings?
My findings, I apologize again, my findings.
And then you decide what to do in the findings.
If I can just, yes, say one thing. As the commissioner, who is the subject of the complaint, um, the complaint itself has been substantially published in the paper. So certainly, um, I welcome the recommended investigation. Um, I would like to be treated fairly. I would like for the person making the complaint to be treated fairly. Um, and at some point in this process, I spoke to Mr. Holmes briefly this morning. Um, this has been very upsetting to me and I understand, um, the, whatever happened, that person who made the complaint is not to be obviously upset. Um, but I would like to be treated fairly and I think that involves an impartial investigator to, as Mr. Holmes has recommended, to sort out the facts. Um, and to do basically what would be the parallel process for a commissioner, who is the subject of the complaint. Um, the similar process that would take place for an employee, but we don't have a provision for that. So I'm just asking to please be treated fairly and to have this going forward then as well, um, to have the person who made the complaint also be treated fairly and have this dealt with expeditions.
I think that's what the, to me, that's what the motion does. We have a motion and a second. Yes, sir. We have public comment. Yes, sir.
I have a simple question. Uh, if both parties agree, would it be simple apology, uh, be satisfied to everyone?
You're asking me? I'm asking everyone.
That's not up to us. That's not up to, um.
Counsel.
That would be up to.
A complaint has been filed. If, uh, from my perspective, at this point, unless the complainant were to voluntarily come forward and say that they did not wish the complaint to be investigated or pursued, it would not be for us to, to start trying to broker a deal by asking if an apology would eliminate the concern. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I've seen this before. This is, this is a smear. With the city and the Atlantic Daily News, uh, how they find, how do they get to the paper? This should have been handled between the two parties and the city manager and maybe the attorney in a closed office. At the lowest position, try to get this solved. But it ends up on the front page of the paper with a picture above the photo. And what the paper finds important, something of a he said, she said, and the witnesses, what they don't find important is examples of when we had, uh, Darryl Walker, who had SEC violations, uh, against him, didn't make the front page of the paper. Um, the late audit that was just published for, uh, 2022, 2023, it had one point, over 1.4 million dollars in misstatements. Did that make the paper? Out of 411 municipalities in Florida, we are the ninth highest in the entire state for municipal rate. And Ms. Ames, was she not, didn't she help you on a campaign? And also, uh, you know, uh, when a couple members of the commission handpicked, uh, one of the citizens to run against Lisa to get her out of, uh, that seat, who was her girlfriend? Who's her girlfriend? Melanie. So this is a smear. This is a smear. You're on seven.
Thank you. Your comments are very disappointing. But thank you. Um, okay, we currently have a motion and a second. Then Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Lauren?
Aye.
Commissioner Lori?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
And on the vice, uh, vice of Mr. Holmes, I am going to recuse myself and if someone would give me the proper paperwork to fill out, I will fill it out.
Christine Marie? Mr. Myers?
Aye. So, thank you. Um, I do have one request, actually two requests. Um, when I spoke to Mr. Holmes this morning, just to get an idea of what I could do and not do, um, he suggested that potentially, um, Ms. Early might even be the person to hire. Um, I would prefer and to just have fairness that we have someone who is not connected with the city and does not know any of us. Um, I think that would certainly, um, I think that would just be more fair to someone who would not, you know.
I didn't suggest that Ms. Early be the one.
I may have missed some of that shit.
Yeah.
Wasn't it that she was?
In the past, I've gone to her in similar settings and asked for a pool of people who might investigate. And she's given me names.
Right, and I have.
Pick one.
I have no objection for that. I thought I heard you say, um, because we talked on the Zoom call, I thought I heard you say that she might be a candidate.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. If I, if you, I'm sorry, I didn't make that more clear. I did not, I did not intend that.
Um, that's fine. Um, and the other thing is, um, I asked Mr. Holmes if it would be appropriate, since this has been in the paper, um, if it would be appropriate for me to submit for the record just, um, a brief written account of my idea of what happened, not to read it here, but just to put it in the record. Um, and he said that was permissible.
And I believe it is. Um, it's a public meeting. She, and there's been a complaint that has been made public. I didn't make it public. I don't know who, who, uh, advised the paper, but they made a public record request. And I think that, you know, number one, it's not inappropriate for her to, to have a response. Uh, and the, and a, and a written response is the cleanness because, you know, it's there. Um, and much likely the complaint was a written statement. I hope we don't end up trying this case in the press with the press going to one and two, back and forth.
I have none here.
Um.
That's why I'm worried of, but I'm paying attention to that.
Well.
I don't know, it is what it is.
Yeah, it is. So, um, you know, there's a, well, I'll just leave it at, at what I've said. I mean, remember this also, uh, there's, any of you who have been employed with superiors, uh, in positions where there are people above you in, in rank of one nature or another, understand that there's a bit of a coercive atmosphere implied at least if a superior tries to talk to a subordinate about a complaint, for instance, and it's taken as a suggestion that the complaint should go away. You understand what I'm saying? If you've ever been in that position, you do understand what I'm saying. And that's kind of that, that superior subordinate relationship exists where you have commissioners and, and employees. Uh, so I think exactly what, what Ms. DeVito said is 100% correct. Fairness is a two-way street. It can't be fair to one without being fair to the other. It's, it's either fair or it's not, to everybody's concern. Out of fairness, Ms. DeVito said, look, there's a, there's a statement out there that says I did things. I'm really in kind of a loss as to how I can respond because someone had told her in the past that she liked, made a response that could be considered a violation of the sunshine law because she's communicating something. And I told her that in my opinion, that at a public meeting like this, if she wanted to produce, produce a written statement, I saw nothing at all wrong with it, with her putting her, her, you know, some statement out there on the table. Uh, sooner or later, it's going to come out in an investigator's report anyway because certainly an investigator would have both accounts of what occurred in the report. Um, so it's, it's not a situation anybody wants to find themselves in. It's uncomfortable talking about it, even here with everybody present, um, for everybody's. And, and, but like I said before, if you don't address it, then you, you have a complaint about what someone considered to be inappropriate contact by a commissioner that you've not done anything with. And, uh, that, that is the grounds, that is the beginning of the potential for an allegation that there's a, there's a hostile work environment that's been created. Someone said, I'm being treated badly and you're saying, okay. Understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, and I'm not saying that she was, again, let me say it one more time real clearly. Uh, nothing I've said is intended as a comment on the merits of the complaint. I don't know.
I got that in. Madam clerk, just for the record, um, uh, for clarification, you received a public records request, correct, from the paper?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so mayor, I, I do have a written statement to provide to the clerk.
Okay.
And as well, if I, Mr. Holmes said it would be appropriate for me just to say something very brief, uh, that does not go to the merits of anything. Um, and that I would just like y'all to know a couple of things. Mayor, please. Okay. Um, obviously, everyone knows that a complaint has been filed by an employee and if you read the paper, you know that it was against me. It is very distressing to me that, um, anything I said would make a city employee feel upset enough to file a formal complaint. Um, I always try to treat others since I wanted to be treated myself. So it's very upsetting to me to hear that something or things that I said made someone feel that bad. And, um, I appreciate, uh, that one of the speakers said, well, would an apology be okay? Um, I would even want to ask that at this point, uh, the person who made the complaint, that did not come from me. And as well, um, if you read the newspaper story, you'll know, um, that there was a quote from me. The paper called me and they asked me for a quote and because it was a commission issue, I, because of the sunshine law, I did not want to say anything substantive, um, outside of a meeting. But I do want to say to you all that, um, a harmonious environment in the city is very important to me. Um, having people feel comfortable here is very important to me. And I am very sensible as to how that feels because several years ago, there was a city employee at a very high level, is no longer here, um, who was very abusive and demeaning to me. And I did bring that up in a meeting and nothing was done. And that person also swore at me in a public meeting. And nobody made any comment whatsoever. So I know how that feels. And, um, whatever happens, I'm very happy there's an investigation and hopefully there'll be an opportunity to sort things out and make it right because I want to feel comfortable here and I want others to feel comfortable here as well. And I would just like to point out that, um, we have, uh, a policy resolution 2023 oh one. Um, we adopted rules and procedures for commission meetings. That was something that I brought to the commission and asked for because it felt like we weren't being necessarily courteous enough to each other. Um, and there were, you know, just some issues as to how we treated each other and the public. And so I brought that forward. So I do care very much and I appreciate your time in listening to how I could have it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Good? Okay. There's gonna be one. Commissioner DeVito, you had, um, two items that you wanted to bring up.
Um, yes, one of them, just put this to bed and, sorry, I've misplaced my agenda. I forget which one was first.
You had the, um, consideration, you rescheduled the August commission meeting.
Oh, not necessarily that we should do it today, but, um, we should be aware, the schedule's not out yet, but it looks like this year, um, the League of Cities conference that we should go to is going to conflict with our, um, regularly scheduled August.
So we could do that at the June meeting and put it on the agenda for the June meeting?
Just, um, I would think that. And then, um, just so the public would have a heads up that maybe the schedule would be up then because then we know what the, you know, the different schedule, I mean, they vary sometimes. And then the other thing, um, I kind of wanted to put to bed, I had asked whether there was enough interest, um, with the members of the commission. There's the, um, ICMA, the International City Council Managers Association training on a variety of subjects for 15 hours that was available for group rate. That if we wanted to take it and we all signed up, um, we could split the cost amongst us. Um, I have not, I don't see anybody else asking us to be on the agenda. Um, I will probably go ahead and spend some of my training money to do it. So if, assuming it's still available. Um, so anyway, just wanted to, to know if anybody else wants to jump in, if it would make sense to go for the whole, um, deal.
I think it's a great idea. It really does cover a lot of information and you can do it during work base and this is just, you're sitting on a computer and work and it actually was really well done. And if I have any training money, or if I have any training money, I'm glad it should have been.
So, also the price, what was the group price? I don't really, I don't recall.
Eight ninety-five.
I think, I think eight ninety-five, or is that just? That would, that was, well, you don't have to do it together.
Right, but that's.
But they were forever. That would give us all the license, the license.
We get five?
Yes. So, um, I didn't do the math, but I assumed that five, and if you have, I think, how many months to do it?
I think I do.
Because I think, I think you could ask them to extend it to if you don't have it done. I think, I think I do have at least four months to do the training.
And I'm making a suggestion.
Sure.
That as we go into, and, and I agree, it probably would be very beneficial for everyone. Um, you should always be learning something. Um, should we make this part as we go into the budget? Because, um, I know that several of you are going to be going to the conference and I don't know if I have to go to the conference this year or not, but, um, that's going to eat up a minimum amount of our money, which it does. Um, so maybe that's something that as we go into the budget, we talk about that in the budget.
One of the units is on budgeting.
Right, those, that's.
Well, we're not going to get to the budgeting right now. I mean, I'm not, so you might, but.
Well, I was just gonna say, that's not irony. That's not irony of it. It applies, a lot of it applies to the budgeting process. But, um, I usually, um, I usually absorb a lot of the cost of my training, so I will probably go ahead and sign up for it and do the budget section. Uh, but yes, I think, we, I think we should talk about it in this just budget. Absolutely. Great idea.
Thank you for bringing that up. Commissioners, do you have any, um, I do have something I need to mention to Dawn. Um, but do you have anything else?
No.
No, and I should have done it, Dawn, I may have got, um, Mr. Rudd, he sent out an email. Did you get his email?
I did not see it.
Okay.
I forgot, I didn't read it.
There's some concern and I think as we go into this, talking about the CRAs and with what's going on legislatively with the CRAs. And, um, he just, as a reminder, and this is just something that for us to, that, um, if the agency sunsets, the districts cannot continue to operate even though they cannot reach their sunset date. And, um, so if he would just, and I'll make sure that we provide a copy of this to all the commissioners as well. It's just, he just recommended that if you talk to Cliff Shepherd, who's the attorney for the FRA, he can help explain and answer questions that, about extending out, extending this out because our central one, I think expires in 2028. So, anyway.
Okay.
And I'll, and I'll make sure that y'all get all the commissioners have a copy to look at it and.
And that's from Charles Rudd?
Yes.
Oh, and then.
Still looking out for us.
Okay, and then state of when, is that recent? Like last week?
Uh, this week, yeah.
This week? Yes.
Those are the bills on the series, not acts.
Um. Now, he says.
I thought they changed a few things.
They did change quite a bit. They have lots of amendments changed.
Yeah, and, and.
And they've nicely rolled it into a bunch of talks that should be.
So what he's saying is that due to the recent legislation and what it resulted in the end of CRAs, we have a lot of discussions, um, this is with the Board of Redevelopment Association Board of Directors on the proper functioning of community redevelopment agencies. A distinction that came up is that when a CRA is created, the community redevelopment agency and the community redevelopment area, the district, have matching sunset dates. When a city adds additional districts with their own sunset dates. When a city adds additional districts with their own sunset dates, the original agency still has the original sunset date. If the agency sunsets, the district cannot continue to operate even though they have not reached their sunshine. I am concerned that this may not, this may have happened in cousin city in 2028 when a city forms a north and south CRA districts with 30-year sunset, I'm sorry, 2018 sunset date. The original agency will sunset in 2028, I believe. He said it can be extended at least another 10 years, but possibly more if it was formed before a date specified in changes to the statute. So anyway.
Okay, yeah, I'll look at it this way.
I just want to make sure. So then I'll make sure to write about that.
Our central is currently extended to 2035.
The central, I thought it was. That's what I said to him, and I thought it was extended to 2035.
Twenty thirty-five, and the market is out to 2028.
Yeah, I thought that sounded, I said, I love that. I said that to him as well, that I thought that it was 2035. I thought it was 2028.
I appreciate you inviting it to us, but I think we would have that discussion when we decided to be a Main Street program if it was that short. I just don't remember that.
So anyway, that's it. Okay, if everything else is okay, can I get in?
I have one more question.
Yes.
About the, I asked them, and I don't know why I have good answers, but the fire hydrant at the corner of Angolaian Summit has been open for years, four years at least, I know. And I know that we did the rest of the projects and replaced them all, but it's still there. And I asked Michael Gohard about those, I asked Charles Rudd about those. I still remember I've got an answer. Do you know why? Now I'm sitting here, the city manager that you're sitting at, can you tell me, or you know?
I asked her public works to work about it. I will double check tomorrow. I'll get you a, a answer as well.
I just, I mean, all of them.
They did all of the fire hydrants.
Yeah, all of them are nice and new. It's got $20,000 on them. I don't know why that didn't get.
Are you sure it wasn't abandoned?
I think it's right. I'm sure my work is, or it's constantly banned there. And I'm pretty sure it's, it's a bunch of western.
Oh, South State, you're across the char, on that side, okay. There was something to that.
I mean, it kind of, it starts, it starts well. Other than why it's, it's.
Okay, I have one quick question. Do we feel that it's necessary to have any authorization for us to contact our state representative or send a relief on the fire station and the restored preservation grant, or do we think that's not necessary? Should we do it, and if we do it, do we need to vote to do that?
Um, that's, that's your call. That's your priority. Commissioner wants to do that.
We're trying to decide a decision.
Okay, so we're not going to, we're just going to go as we've been going on.
We're going to, this is a, depends on also them, we'll copy it, right?
I mean, I was, like I said, I called and left a message with them.
Right, I mean, we put it in a, so obviously, we support.
That we're still supportive of it.
Okay, so I would just, we need to, we need to keep watching that. All right, that's all. I have a motion without, oh, I'm sorry, I need to stop. I moved it. We have John.
Okay.
Okay, a motion and a second. All fair, please say aye.
Aye.